Seeing a presence of a quorum of the Amherst School Committee, I'm calling to order that meeting at 6:02 PM on February 1st. And please stay present when I call your name. I'm just gonna go on the screen. Ms. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Harrington?
Present.
Mr. Dumming?
Present.
And McDonald, present. I'll turn it over to Pelham Chair Hall.
All right, thanks. Seeing a presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee. Please stay present when I call your name. Margaret?
Present.
Sarah Best?
Sarah Best, brilliant.
And Paul, present. And I don't see other members. Okay, Pelham's all set.
All right, so seeing the presence of the quorum of the Regional School Committee, I will call us to order. Just gonna go around the screen and not mess this up. So Jennifer?
Present.
Peter?
Present.
Jean? Welcome back to Jean, he's enjoying weather. Sarah Best?
Sarah Best, present.
Present, present.
Oh, there we go, good, we got Jean. Allison?
Present.
I think that's all I have on my screen.
Well, hello. Hello.
Oh, is that Irv?
Yes, I'm calling in by phone because the network is down where I am.
All right, so we got Irv present as well, I assume?
Margaret, present also.
Margaret, sorry about that. Yep, Margaret, yeah, I knew I was gonna mess that up. So we are starting off with the superintendent evaluation process. You wanna set that up? DeMaurice?
Sure, would you like me to display that slide on the screen?
Yes, please.
You'll be having one second. Is that viewable? Is that okay to read?
I learned that if you click on the hamburger in the left, I think it collapses that sidebar if you want to collapse it. It makes it bigger.
Yep, and you can just cue me when you want me to go on to another next slide.
Right. All right, so I'm pretty much narrating this through. I don't know how that works. Allison?
Yeah, I thought that I would just add sort of why this is here. So, am I unmuted? Yes. This came up in between last meetings at the request of Peter to just talk about the process because we have so many new members and members that haven't been part of sort of the creation of the current policy process and approach. And I think it came up at our last meeting, and I don't think Stephen is here tonight. Oh, no, I see him. So just wanted to sort of recap all the work that had happened over the years to where we are, so that to the benefit of our new members, and just sort of walk through policy, contract, and legal guidance that influences our evaluation process.
All right.
I'll just look at Peter in case there was, I captured that.
Uh, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I wasn't even expecting you to put this together, so this is great. I mean, yeah, so this just really came up on, you know, we've been periodically, we talk about how can we knowledge share and bring people up to speed and preserve our institutional knowledge better. And this is one of the processes that it took me two or three years, you know, minimum to really understand how all the pieces fit together. And there's a couple of processes we go through like this, like budget and policy. But especially when you join midstream, it might not be immediately apparent how everything joins together and, you know, what depends on what. So, yeah, I just thought this might be a good idea just to kind of, since we're about to head into evaluation season, have a kind of an overview, answer questions, that kind of thing. When, going way back, when Mr. Jakajima was the chair, he did a lot of work in terms of bringing in the state standards and formalizing our process, so just trying to keep that rolling.
Rended that, um, Stephen, did you wanna walk us through this? Or did somebody from that committee wanna walk us through this? Any volunteers?
I can, I can talk through it.
All right.
Unless you want to, it doesn't.
Yeah.
So, let's go to the next slide.
Yep.
So, this is just a high-level overview of just sort of the key steps that, there's goal setting that happens at the beginning of this school year, this schedule and instrument creation sort of in the spring, and individual, and then summative evaluations and approval that contractually need to happen by July 1st or be completed. And there's some sort of three key areas that sort of govern and guide this process, which is the Mass General Law, with that sort of the superintendent rubric and sort of other guidance there, as well as our own policy and our contract with the superintendent. And I think June through September is wishful thinking. It would be our hope to get there. In fact, our policy, I think it was, that actually describes us having to have that conversation before the fiscal year starts. But typically and traditionally, we do it in sort of the September timeframe.
Next.
So with goal setting, typically what happens is, at least recently, in recent years, the committee discusses and provides guidance to the superintendent about the priorities for the upcoming year. The superintendent then takes that and drafts goals based on the superintendent, the school committee guidance. And contractually, we talk about wanting at least four goals per district, but also no more than eight in total. There can be shared, goals that are shared across the three districts or across two districts of the three districts to get to that eight total. The goals should be SMART goals, so I think the S is missing there. Usually it's stretch, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timedown. And they have to be tied to the DESI Superintendent Evaluation Standards, which we lovingly call the rubric. The committee then discusses the initial draft, an initial proposal of goals, and gives feedback to the superintendent who makes updates based on that. And this may happen over the course of two meetings or three meetings, depending on sort of the depth and complexity of the goals. And then the committee approves the final goals by a vote. And again, that usually happens by October. Next. So in terms of the, the next phase is the schedule and instrument creation, which happens in the spring. So the evaluation subcommittee will draft the schedule with input from the superintendent, and then the instrument, and the school committee will approve that. The subcommittee typically drafts the instrument for the regional school committee, and then the individual elementary school committees that the superintendent, also so Amherst and Pelham, will typically adapt the regional school committee instrument for their committees. And that's usually then led by the chairs in coordination with the evaluation subcommittee. And then that key thing is that the whole process needs to be completed, meaning the summative evaluations have to be completed by July 1st. Within the instrument, we're required to include ratings on the four evaluation standards, which are listed there, as well as the progress on the goals and an overall rating. And we include the list of just a detail of the goals and the desired goals. Next. Once, when it comes to the evaluation writing, the superintendent will present evidence that summarizes the work of the year to support our evaluation. We call that the artifacts of work. And our evaluations must be based on those on the creed upon goals that were agreed at the beginning of the year. And so even when we're evaluating on the, on the standards, we link it back to how that was evidenced in the goals. All members can submit individual evaluations regardless of length of service, so members do not have to have been on the committee for the full year in order to submit that evaluation. Members can omit sections or even choose not to submit an evaluation. The only restriction is that former members may not submit an evaluation, so somebody who left the committee midway through the school year does not submit an evaluation. The chair drafts the summative evaluation based off of the individual evaluations, and the individual feedback cannot be separated from the summative view. So we didn't, we do not publish the individual evaluations. The superintendent receives the summative as well as copies of all the individual evaluations. And then the committee discusses and approves that summative evaluation. And the individual school committee members may meet with the superintendent to discuss their individual evaluation if they choose. And these are just links to the guide from DESI, as well as the law, and the MASC guide to the evaluation. And then just for reference, which they're also linked right within the Island Board docs, but are directly from this deck to the goals that were approved for this school year for all three districts. Did I leave anything out, Peter? Or Ben? Or Stephen?
Nothing that I see.
No, you, you did a nice job of covering it all. Just, yeah, so the keys are if you're a former member, you can't, even though you may have sat in the bulk of the school year, you can't do one. And then everyone, even if it's only been a month, you're welcome to do one. And it has to stick to the goals. You can't just set, take a piece of paper and write another whole essay on how you feel. You have to stick to the goals. Although there is a little spot, as Peter will point out, that you can freelance a little bit, but you really need to stick to the framework.
All right, so open it up for discussion or questions, if any exist. All right, I don't see any hands, so, wow, I do see a hand, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Allison for putting these slides together. This is, I don't think I've seen all this information in the same place, the law, the contract, and all, how that fits together. So, this is good, this will, hopefully this outlives us all and we can carry on the institutional knowledge. Maybe for some of the other processes we have to, I'm thinking of like policy approval or budget approval or the state budget cycle that is, impacts our budget in a big way. Some of those things might be able to drop some breadcrumbs as well.
Jennifer?
Sorry, do any other individuals give input into the evaluation other than school committee members?
Seeing shaking heads, two shaking heads. Go ahead, Peter.
So, in terms of the superintendent's own performance, I mean, he could speak for himself in terms of who he talks to about, you know, 360 eval or wherever. You know, we, I think another benefit of talking about the process like this is that it's a public process, right? And so this is, this, we're sharing with the public what we do, and, you know, the public is free to contact us and contact the superintendent and input, input on the performance. In terms of the school committee's contractual responsibility with superintendent, it's just a school committee evaluation.
Thank you. Mike, there we go, I see. Go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, so for the last several years, I've included an anonymous survey that went out to the leadership team, but they fill out and I share the responses as part of my artifacts. It's not a requirement of the process, but I do think it's, it's best practice and the process is for me to learn and grow. I've gotten a lot of really helpful feedback that I've then tried to implement in terms of improving practice, as well as knowing places where the practice has been effective. So, something that I think the committee has supported in the past and something I would plan to continue doing in the future.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments, or? Oh, all right, so I'm gonna turn it over to superintendent to go ahead and set this presentation up.
So, um, let me get my screens. And Rick, I don't know if you want me to present slides or you were planning on presenting them yourself?
I can present them myself, Mike.
Let me, let me do a little introduction.
Yes.
Other than the technical part. So, I wanna introduce Rick Rogers, he's gonna be presenting a reporter study that he did. I'll let him do the formal introduction. But basically, this fall, we had, in the last couple of years, we've had a fair amount of principal turnover. Rick will go over that this isn't a unique to Amherst trend necessarily in the field. And in terms of school leaders, they're incredibly critical to the operation of the district, you know? No matter what I do here, if there's not leaders in the schools doing the critical work, it, it's not gonna make a huge difference when we think about students and student achievement and student safety and well-being. So, it was a concern, and it remains a concern. And we had a conversation with our administrative team about this, our leadership team. And one of the ideas was to see if somebody could come and interview both individuals who are currently in school leadership roles, as well as folks who were in leadership roles in the district of the last 10 years but are no longer working for us. And so I called MASSS, the head of my professional organization. I said, "Do you know anybody who might be able to take this project on?" He acknowledged that this was a problem in many districts around the Commonwealth. He thought it was a really good idea to have somebody come do this, and actually, something I neglected to do, but I'll do tonight, is send him the report now that it's a public document. I certainly wanted to wait until it was a public document. But he recommended I reach out to Rick Rogers. Rick and I did not know each other prior to this. I don't believe we'd ever met, you know, possibly been in the same place, but I don't, I don't recall that. But, you know, I wanna thank Rick for taking on and doing this project virtually, which from a research perspective brings with it some challenges. But I think the thing I'll say before I really turn it over to Rick to share, you know, his process and what, and his findings, as well as recommendations, was that I heard from leaders who met with Rick afterwards, not describing the content, but describing that they felt like it was a helpful process, that they enjoyed talking to Rick and they enjoyed sharing their experiences and felt very comfortable with, with you, Rick. And I said, "Well, thank Tom Scott, don't thank me." Because, you know, I was really, didn't have a connection, but I really appreciate Rick's work. I think he really thoroughly got a taste of Amherst, even though not literally being here. And I'll turn it over to you, Rick, and you should be able to, at this point, present your slides. But I just wanna thank you for being here tonight.
Great. Let me get the slides up first. All right, are those showing okay?
Yep, yep, they're up.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike, for the, for the introduction, and good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here and share this work with you. I was a longtime principal in Massachusetts, and I currently work supporting principals at all levels of experience, from aspiring to brand-new to experience. And I'm very passionate about supporting school leaders. So I really enjoyed having the opportunity. Had not done a project like this before, and found the district to be incredibly welcoming and transparent, you know, as coming in as, as an outsider. So the purpose of the study that we agreed to was to look at a consistent pattern of departure of school leaders, to try to identify common stressors and barriers that may be contributing to school leaders not remaining in the district long-term. We wanted to try to identify some skills and attributes that school leaders who remain in the district have demonstrated in order to hopefully better recruit and support leaders in the future. And then finally, to make some recommendations related to hiring, onboarding, and supporting school leaders, both new and those who've been in the district for a while. Before I launch into sort of the Amherst specific piece, I wanted to just give a little context more from kind of a national perspective. We've known for a long time that the principal matters. Research has shown that the principal has, is second only to teacher in terms of direct impact on student achievement. And we know that effective school leaders have a very strong impact on achievement, on school climate, and on equity work. There's a terrific study done last, about a year ago, from the Wallace Foundation, that looked at 20 years of research and reinforced these findings. At the same time, we know that the nature of relationships among adults in schools has the greatest potential to shape school culture and thus student learning. Relational trust is critical to a healthy school culture and social and academic outcomes for students. And then when we look at work on culturally responsive education, we know that culturally responsive teaching requires an environment so that the brain, where the brain perceives it as safe and nurturing, in order to focus on learning. And that, that same piece holds true for the adults as well as the students. Longevity matters in that principal turnover can be disruptive. It can jeopardize school improvement efforts, can fracture relationships. You, just a few moments ago, were talking about institutional knowledge, that can get lost easily. And in particular, historically marginalized student groups are disproportionately harmed by principal turnover. We know that, that work with equity and making progress requires sustained effort over time, and that's hard to do if you have turnover in the principalship. We know nationally that principals are under pressure. I wanna underscore that this was, this is prior to the pandemic. Research was finding that principals are experiencing substantial job-related stress that compromises their well-being, as well as their leadership. And organizations such as the National Policy Board of Education actually updated their standards due to the increasing complexity and challenges of the work. Then the pandemic hit, and we know that, that the impact that's had on everyone, you know, in education, not just principals. But there was a recent survey done by the National Association of Secondary School Principals, but they surveyed pre-K to 12 principals, and they found that 40% were expecting to leave their position in the next three years. Typically, 20% either leave or change schools in a, in a particular year, so that, that number has increased. 73% reported working longer hours, 62% reported having a harder time with their work. And one of the most troubling things, which I think speaks to the kind of discourse we have in our country at this moment, is that 34% reported receiving online threats from parents and 29% in person. So, you know, clearly, there are pressures on, on principals that are concerning. So in terms of methodology, you know, this is obviously a qualitative study. I was able to speak with 16 administrators, including current and former principals, some assistant principals, as well as in-depth interviews with the Assistant Superintendent for Diversity, Equity, and Human Resources, and with the superintendent. And I have to say that, you know, each situation is unique, right? And each school has its own story, each leader has their own story. And so my job was to listen to those stories and to try to identify the themes that emerged. So, a lot of positives came out about Amherst and working in Amherst. I think a significant draw for, for many folks is the diversity of the student body and the community. The strong commitment to social justice and anti-racism work was appealing to many folks in, in these leadership roles. And I wanna highlight the support from the superintendent, including regular individual meetings with principals, accessibility, and willingness to listen. And I heard that from every single person, including the people who've left. And, you know, it's a real tribute, I think, to Mike and the relationships that he's established with principals, the level of support. I, it was really quite striking as someone new to the district. People cited the quality of the faculty, using words like brilliant and passionate, the strong family support and involvement, intellectual stimulation, a smart community where people wanna do the work. And then finally, the current administrative team is perceived to be supportive and collaborative. So lots of positives. In terms of some of the challenges, I think, you know, a significant one was the Amherst culture. Each kind of community has its culture. And Amherst was described as a community that values discourse and consensus, but is also one that questions or challenges most decisions. In the words of one respondent, "I fully expect that any decision I make will be questioned." And some people find that challenging. When, another challenge was when public criticism turned personal. So when people felt that they were being targeted by an individual or a group or online in social media, in some cases, you know, a negative narrative would develop around a person. And, and also some offensive, you know, criticism, not constructive. So that is a challenge. Outspoken families and community members, while people valued, you know, the involvement of families and community members, there are concerns raised about whether sort of the loud voices are the ones that are being heard and are driving decisions, and finding it challenging to, you know, reach out and, and reach everyone. There are variations in the schools in terms of the staff relational trust, both between staff and principal and, and staff with each other. And that's to be expected. In any school that has frequent turnover in leadership, a lack of trust is gonna tend to be more prevalent. And so, you know, you've gotta, as a new person coming in, you've gotta break through that and establish that. And then finally, while people recognize the strong commitment to social justice in, in the Amherst-Pelham community, some folks cited what they felt were mixed messages on this area. And while people wanna talk about social justice, there was some resistance to making meaningful change. So these were some of the challenges that, you know, all of the administrators I spoke with mentioned. Reasons for turnover. A big one was for folks who come in new to Amherst-Pelham. Even if they felt like they got a good feel for the community as part of the hiring process, they still experienced culture shock here. And that particularly had to do around issues of shared decision-making and, you know, sort of being comfortable with, with levels of discourse. That was, that was a particular challenge. And then when attacks, as I mentioned earlier, became more personalized, or pressure became more personalized and, and actually turned into attacks, that has, you know, pushed some people out rather quickly. The resistance to change, again, someone, you know, coming in new, feeling, particularly in buildings where there's been turnover, that there was resistance to making changes. And then of course, there also are individual circumstances, which are And then, of course, there also are individual circumstances which are not part of part of this report. I probed specifically around areas of identity. It's worth noting that the longest serving school leaders in Amherst Pelham are all white men. And in speaking with with leaders who identified as BIPOC. They've clearly faced additional pressure to prove themselves, were more likely to report being having their qualifications questioned. But they also talked about feeling this dual pressure, the pressure to prove themselves to the dominant culture. But also needing to prove themselves to the group with which they identified and feeling pressure to do that. So it's like a two-pronged pressure that leaders of color have to have to face. Some women reported feeling a lack of respect and being subjected 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 to comments about age, appearance and even eating habits. And then some these negative narratives, many of them were sort of, I'll say, gender based, you know, examples being she never smiles, things like that. Now, in in talking about race and gender. Some conversation around is this, you know, is it different in the Amherst than elsewhere? And some people felt it was the same, they had experienced this at other places. Some women in particular felt that the lack of respect seemed seemed stronger in 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 Amherst. I I can't make a generalization about that. But I think what what is worth noting here is that folks came in expecting it to be better. So if it's the same, it should be better based on the values that the the community has identified. And then finally, on a positive note, leaders who identified as LGBTQ plus universally reported feeling supported by the community. So that is a little bit about the role of identity. So I'm gonna, you know, in the report, I go into detail on some supports that are currently in place and what people felt were needed. I outlined some attributes and and dispositions. These are embedded in my recommendations, so I'm not going to go into those now. And I'm going to pause, if that is okay with the chair, to just give folks an opportunity to react, to ask questions to this. And then I will go into recommendations. I have six areas of recommendations I'd like to speak about.
Yeah, I think this is a perfect place to pause and kind of process the first half of the presentation here. Gene, go ahead.
Well, first, thanks for a real thorough. A thorough analysis. It was, I thought it was pretty interesting and just a helpful snapshot. And then I'll express sort of the obvious that it seems that a lot of the people interviewed were really satisfied and fulfilled by their roles in the school and with their relationships in the school and among administration, teachers. But that the community pressures seemed stood out to me as reasons for stress and contributing to turnover. And I'm just wondering, you may have this in your recommendations. I mean, what do we do about that? Because it's just not acceptable, in my opinion, to allow people to be abusive. People can express opinions, but I'm just wondering how the district deals with particular episodes of community members just be personally attacking administrators.
So so I will, sorry. Okay, sorry, it's a Zoom, a online moment there where it's hard to tell when folks are done. I apologize. I will get to that piece around the community in my recommendations. I do want to just clarify, though, that, you know, some leaders did report, you know, some challenges within their school building with their staff. And, you know, that that varied a little bit from school to school and with the amount of turnover that's been here. So so, you know, and and parents, so it's a, there's responsibility across all three. You know, staff, families and community. And I'll try to, I'm actually going to try to address all three of those in my recommendations.
Thank you. Oh, right away. Peter.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, thank you for doing this. I'll I'll save save some other thoughts for later, but um, just in terms of questions like, so you've done this, you've engaged with a lot of school communities over the years. And so I'm just wondering from your point of view of of these challenges that you've listed so far. And, you know, problems, which of these seemed to be way higher than average? Like, it's it's really difficult for us in in Amherst, because we live here, to 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 get an outsider's perspective and know that, like, you know, oh, well, all communities must deal with X, Y, or Z, or it's uniquely Amherst or mostly uniquely Amherst to be A, B, C, which? So if you could just talk about what, from your your point of view, really stood out to you or surprised you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that the the piece I was I was trying to speak to around the culture of Amherst. I think that the you know, the 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 desire for input into decisions, then, you know, the, you know, the need to involve, you know, shared leadership. Is, you know, is stronger in Amherst than in many places. I work in a in a district and I won't name that district right now, but, you know, and I used to kiddingly say to my colleagues. There's a healthy disrespect for authority. And I think there's a little touch of that in Amherst, you know, from from what I was able to to glean. I want to be careful here because, you know, coming in from outside. So so I think that, you know, that that stood out for sure. And then I think this dichotomy of a very progressive community that has a strong commitment and and demonstrated commitment to social justice. And yet, you know, there's still some areas that need to be addressed around identity of school leaders and diversifying school leaders going forward. So so that would, again, you would, I would expect from from, you know, what the little bit I know about Amherst Pelham that that it would be a place that would be better at that. And and so those, I guess those would be two things that I would say off the top of my head.
Allison. You're still on mute?
Thank you. I clicked in the wrong area. I really appreciate, so I was just going to second what others have said about really appreciating the work that you put into this and the thoughtfulness in the report. And I think I what I especially appreciated was the upfront contextualizing that you did in the report and and also tonight about the the research and the data on the impact that principals and principal turnover has on our students and the work that we're trying to accomplish in the district. Because I think that's, we all know that and understand that intuitively. And I think it's really important to sort of be reminded with that with that data, particularly as we're talking about the findings and how do we support our own principal, our own leadership in in Amherst. I think, you know, reading this report in the detail is is pretty pretty sobering. And, you know, a couple of the things that I'm really that really stood out to me was a couple of things. This this idea of, you know, how do we, how do we support new principals and new leaders leadership? And, you know, as I was thinking about this and reading this is my my children have gone gone through Fort River and the middle school and the high school, and each one of those schools have had multiple, multiple principals in their tenure. So I think it was like three, maybe four during their during our time in in Fort River. Three different leadership groups at the middle school and two so far at the high school, right? So I've I've lived through that personally as well as as a leader. And I I will say one of the things that really stood out to me. And and sort of seeing that reflected in your report sort of brings that more to light, which is we we tend to as a community take this sort of wait and see approach and and approach a new principal with a skepticism. So it's a new person coming in, let's see how they do. And and sort of waiting, not necessarily assuming failure, but just really being skeptical from the very get go. Rather than how do we pivot? And I'm curious when we get to talking about recommendations, but how do we pivot that mindset so that it's? How can I help make this principal successful? How can I help ensure that this leader has what they need and has the support they need to be successful in their new role? And I think, you know, that that sort of notion that it's not just the administration's responsibility to ensure and support the success of its leadership in the schools, but also for the families and the broader community to support that and how can we do that? So when we get to talking about recommendations, I'm really curious about that. And the other thing, this this notion that, and it's, it doesn't end with just school leadership. But this notion that public officials and public leaders need to be able to just take it. That our free speech rights and, you know, public discourse are are free game. And everyone should, you know, recognize that and accept that. And I think, you know, what what your research and your interviews are showing us is that it does matter. And that this this question of how can we have this spirited debate and discourse? And where ideas are shared and pushed about and and refined, but in a way that is respectful and open. And that we're not, we're not scaring people, pushing people away. And this idea that, yes, you're absolutely within your rights to say and push back on whatever decisions you want. And then connecting the dots and saying, but it's having a negative impact on our school community and therefore on our students. And therefore harming our ability to achieve our mission as a district. And I think, you know, again, coming back to the recommendations, I really think that focusing on that piece can really help us. Because it's not sort of just idle talk and idle public discourse. It has a real impact on our children and on our mission. And so I think, you know, I look forward to working on this together with the community.
Sarah.
Thanks. I have, well, I have a lot of thoughts. I'm not going to share all of them now. I will keep it narrow to just one sort of, I guess, kind of qualitative question for you, Rick, was, did you? Did you feel when you were conducting these conversations that people were sort of laying it all out there? Were they holding back a little? I just, I I ask because in my experience, both as a school committee member and also as a parent. I mean, I've seen, you know, there was reference to like, oh, I know all of my, any decision I make will be questioned. I feel like I've seen many times, not just questioning of decisions, but like very public kind of mean spirited criticism of decisions without any alternative proposed, without having like some productive alternative. So some of it almost seemed a little bit toned down from things that I've witnessed. And I was was curious how if you how sort of, how much full disclosure you felt like you got.
Hard for me to tell, right? But my sense was that people were incredibly willing to be open and appreciated the opportunity to tell me their story. Particularly the people who, actually, no, not particularly, the the people who left as well as the people in the district. You know, and and so I felt that I got, you know, very quickly got to, you know, the story. In terms of toning things down, you know, I think that that one of the commitments I made as part of this process was that we would not put in information that could be individually identifiable. So in some cases, you know, I'm describing something, you know, that where there was a theme across several principles. And if I put in the detail, you know, you you talk about it being a hard read. You know, it would be a hard read, but I could not do that without, you know, and maintain the confidentiality of the people.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question. I so this is probably shocking coming from me, but there was a, there's a part that stood out kind of glaringly to me, the the role of identity. When 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 folks would buy poke BIPOC folks were talking about this, this feeling of being kind of, you know, having to live up to these these two different groups. And I'll save my opinion for for after. Did you find that unique about Amherst? Or is that that something that you typically would find in in other districts?
I mean, I think I think that it exists everywhere. I actually read something today and watched a interview clip with John Thompson, the the old Georgetown basketball coach, if you remember that. And and he talked about that we're not, and it's in the context of hiring coaches, you know, of of color and so on, that that, you know, that we're not, we're not willing to give people of color a chance to fail, you know? And so, you know, this was in the context of a blog I was reading from a principal who's a who's a national leader in in equity work about, you know, diversifying your faculty. And that people feel they have to find the perfect person of color. And that's not, that's not fair, that's not right. Everyone should be given the same opportunity. And, you know, he may fail or he may not, but that, you know, we're, we tend to give, you know, people who are white more of a, you know, opportunity to 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 fail. So I think, you know, I think that and that, so that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a part of our country, right? I think what is, what I heard that was maybe unique to Amherst is that, you know, that it is a community that is doing a lot of work in this area and where there, it's a diverse community and where parent groups are well organized. And so that that pressure you to sort of meet the expectations of the group that you identify with. I I think that may be stronger in Amherst in some places, you know, because the, you know, because you do have groups that are you know, organized and comfortable speaking up as they should be, but it creates this this extra pressure. Beyond that, I I really, I I would want to, you know, defer to to leaders who are people of color who could speak directly about that experience.
Exactly. I know I haven't, I haven't ever not felt that in my life, so, but the other part I was going to ask, because, you know, I I'll lead with my opinion is that I I think in Amherst, the the emphasis on qualification tends to be higher or the questioning of. And I was wondering, within the BIPOC folks that you talked to, if they felt the same way?
I don't think I can, I don't think I can answer that specific question. I mean, they they did talk about having their quest, their qualifications questioned. And, you know, I think you know, there are certain communities around the state where where you went to school makes a difference in terms of how you're perceived coming in. And and it's fair to say Amherst is one of those communities, so.
All right, so any other questions or comments before we get to the recommendations? Take that as a green light.
Okay, let me get the slides back up. Are you seeing those? Okay.
Yep, all set.
Okay, great. So my first recommendation is around what we call entry planning and making this process two-way. It's standard practice in many districts to require new hires to create a formal entry plan. And then communicate that plan to the school community and set a timeline for when they're going to report out to the school community what they've learned. In a graduate course I teach for aspiring school leaders, we expect them to create an entry plan as one of their final projects, you know, going in. Now, this is not currently required in 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 Amherst. And and, you know, I would certainly recommend that it that it is something that should be required. At the same time, and this is the two-way piece, the district needs to do some work around creating a blueprint of processes and procedures that need to be part of supporting a new principal. You know, everyone's busy with their their work and their tasks. And 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 so it can be hard for a new person to get the information that they need. So being clear about, you know, these are all the areas we want to make sure, you know, during those critical summer months before the school year started, for example, that these things happen and that it's clear to the person coming in who you call for a particular area. You know, even as simple Um, you know, even as simple as creating, as I have here, a who to call list. Um, so that would be, um, you know, one, one recommendation. A second recommendation, and this applies particularly to the schools that, where they've experienced frequent turnover recently. Um, I think it's important to engage the school community in a process to identify what the school needs and wants from a new leader at the start of the hiring process. That's standard practice. Um, but it's also important that the school community and, 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 and I'm including staff and, you know, families in this, um, piece, that they're identifying steps that they're going to take to welcome and support an incoming leader. So one of the members, I, I don't remember who, I'm sorry, um, you know, talked about, um, you know, people kind of standing off and, and watching someone. Um, I think schools need to be doing a better job welcoming and assuming good intent. Um, and, you know, to, to help a new person coming in. Um, I would suggest that, um, you know, but again, particularly in schools that have experienced a great deal um, of turnover, that these issues of relational trust, um, need to be addressed. And that that needs to be ongoing work during the first year. And perhaps it should be, you know, it could be started with a consultant or with, um, a district administrator, someone who's got a little distance from the school and, but then hopefully then taken over by the principal. Um, but where there's periodic checkpoints about how things are going. Um, so really, you know, I think holding schools that, um, you know, are, have struggled with turnover recently to a, to a higher standard here, like, okay, we, we've got an issue and we, we need to figure out how we as a community can support someone and make them feel welcome. Third recommendation would be to strengthen mentor supports. Now, Mike has recently started bringing in mentors for, uh, from outside the district, um, which is great. Um, I think that, um, and this is a need for, for many districts, need to identify a menu of areas that should be addressed with a mentor and along with sort of a schedule of topics for the year, um, just to formalize that. I would advocate that any principal who's new to the role, whether they come from within the district or outside the district, be assigned an external mentor, someone from outside the district. Um, and the reason for that is that person can be a neutral sounding board. Um, and that person is doing that work, so has the time to do it. Someone within the district, another principal can, with all good intentions, try to be available, but it's just not the same as having someone who has a dedicated commitment, um, to working. And I think particularly new administrators deserve, um, this kind of support, at least in their first year. And then the, the third recommendation under this is to assign any principal new to Amherst. So now I'm talking about someone who maybe comes in with 20 years' experience or someone with, um, just a couple of years' experience, doesn't matter if they're new, they need a district mentor. And I'm going to call that person a docent as a way to differentiate it, who can guide and advise on Amherst culture and expectations and processes, how things are done around here. Um, so it's a two-step mentoring, uh, uh, position. And then finally, um, may want to consider providing group sessions for new administrators on key topics throughout the school year. Um, these are, um, I've, I've, I've had the experience of, of working, um, in a couple of districts that have done this. And there's a lot of benefit in, um, to allowing people to, to kind of connect with the other folks new to the district and the support. So that's around the, the mentoring. Fourth recommendation would be to enhance what's already strong central office and peer support. Um, obviously to continue that access, um, to, to the superintendent. Um, the, you know, I cited that before as, as something people saw as a real positive. But at the same time, to expand and formalize support provided by others in central office, in particular, the assistant superintendent, director of student services, who both were mentioned as supports and who are working with some administrators, but there isn't a sort of formal structure for them. Um, and it would create another layer, it would take some pressure off of, um, the superintendent to have to do it on his own. Um, and it also gives a place for a school leader to, you know, maybe they aren't ready to share something with the superintendent. Um, you know, so it's just a, it's a, a different, um, a different access point. Um, and then, um, the regular leadership team meetings, um, both current and past leaders cited times when the district has devoted a good amount of time in these leadership team meetings to talking about problems of practice with colleagues. And this is something that through no, and through no fault of anyone, has kind of fallen by the wayside largely because of the pandemic, I think. Um, you know, and, and, and the demands, um, that are there. But that's something to consider bringing back, um, because people clearly felt that that was a, a support they valued. In terms of the hiring process, the one that you have in place is thorough. Now, understand that you, you can't always do the full process, right? If someone leaves in August, you've got to scramble and, and fill the position. But, but for the most part, the process is thorough. Um, and, you know, includes forums with staff and families. And people coming in from outside, um, did say that, you know, they felt it helped them get some feel. Um, I think the one area to, to really, um, look at is to try to define and make more explicit some of the attributes that are most needed to be successful in Amherst as opposed to somewhere else. And the ones that I would highlight, based on what I heard, were, are, sorry, a willingness to share leadership um, and a willingness to engage in discourse around most decisions. If someone is coming in and wants to be top-down, that is not going to work in a lot of places, but particularly not going to work in Amherst. Um, so making sure that that is articulated to candidates coming in and it's being considered as hiring decisions are being made. And then the last recommendation, and this speaks a little bit to the, the first, um, member who commented about the need for a community conversation. And, you know, consider, um, whether there's a way to have a larger, um, conversation about how to support and retain school leaders. And I would say, you know, allow for that public discourse that's still respectful, um, for, for everyone, including school committee members. So, um, you know, maintaining open and respectful dialogue in the face of disagreement. Um, developing some way, I don't know what it is, it's like a circuit breaker or something that gets activated to interrupt and respond when that dissent turns personal or even offensive um, in public meetings or through social media. Slowing down the rush to judgment in response to early mistakes and work to counter hurtful narratives that seem to develop very quickly. Um, several people, um, described Amherst as a place that's quick to judge, um, quick to draw a line in the sand. And, um, that needs to be examined and slowed down. And then finally, um, you know, I think to engage in an honest self-assessment. Um, this goes well beyond the scope of what I was doing about how gender and race may be impacting how leaders are welcomed and treated. Um, you know, yes, it's an issue every, everywhere, but, um, we, you know, I know the community wants to do better there. So, um, you know, in closing, um, the issues and recommendations in this report are intended to help the schools support and retain leaders. And I just want to underscore again that the district should be a desirable place to serve as a school leader because of some of these characteristics that are listed here and that I cited earlier. Um, so, um, I'm optimistic, um, that, uh, you know, this, this is something that can, can be worked on and improved. So I will stop sharing and turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. So we will open back up for discussion here and start off with Jennifer.
Hi, Rick. Thank you. This is, this, uh, report is fantastic and thank you for all this work. Um, one thing that I noticed that I thought was, um, notable was you say on page five of your report that veteran principals cited coming up through their ranks as contributing to their longevity. Um, and I wonder if there, and, and, but your recommendations don't include necessarily anything about supporting current educators in, in doing just that and moving up through the ranks. And so I'm wondering if that's, um, an area where we might look to, because, you know, once you've been an educator in the district, you kind of get the lay of the land more so than someone coming in from the outside. You already know that, you know, that people are, people question decisions and people like to state their opinion. So my, my first, I, I have two questions. My first one, i- is that something, is that, is that, um, something we could or should consider doing is having some sort of supports or just, um, thoughts or, or some way of supporting current educators who are interested in moving up through the ranks?
Absolutely, that's something. And, and I understand the district already has some things in place to help folks with completing licensure requirements in particular. Um, the dread, the dreaded PAL tasks that are, um, part of getting a principal license. Um, if you're not part of a formal program, um, I, I understand that there's some support there. Um, maybe the superintendent could speak to that. Um, the reason I didn't address that specifically is, you know, yes, there should be opportunities for people to grow. Um, but I also think that the district needs to be able to also bring people in from the outside. Um, you're not, you know, you're going to get stagnant. You're not going to grow and develop if you don't bring people in from outside with a different perspective. It should be a balance, you know, over, over time. That's something a superintendent has to consider. You know, okay, do I need to hire someone, you know, the last two people I hired are, are, um, you know, from within the system? Um, you know, am I bringing in, you know, the, that fresh new perspective? Um, that, you know, and so that, that should, it, so it's not that, that it's not important to promote people from within, but I think it's, it's not something that, um, you should rely solely on. There's no reason that, you know, and I'll speak as someone who, I, I worked in four districts in 27 years as a principal. I chose to leave about every eight years or so, um, as a way to keep myself fresh and take on a new challenge. Um, I wanted to stay a principal. Um, so someone like me with, you know, 15 years' experience, if I've applied to Amherst, I should be able to come and be successful there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have one other question.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I noted in your report was, and, and which you also said that, um, it's worth noting that the longest-serving administrators are white men, and it's also noteworthy that most of the principals who've left were women. I feel like that's a really important, um, piece of information there. And obviously it's a small sample size, it's one snapshot in time, but does it point to a larger problem related to gender issues or, or, uh, within the district? And I, I don't, I, I'm not, within the recommendations that you gave, which are all great, I don't necessarily see anything specific about that addresses that. Like maybe women principals need a woman mentor, maybe, um, maybe there are other ways to support women who are leaders in the district that we're not seeing that. And, and, you know, some of these things about mentoring obviously are going to be beneficial for both, for people of all genders. But I feel like that, that really, that, that was really, I was surprised and distressed to, to, to read that. And also some of the examples that you gave about comments that women get on their eating habits, like it's very, that was very distressing to me. And I, I don't, I don't know that the recommendations necessarily, um, specifically address the gender issue.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, you know, I, I, um, you know, I, as, that resonates with me that, that, you know, I probably should have addressed that more, um, specifically. I will say that the concerns around gender, and, and this may have been due to numbers, I, I'm not sure, but, um, felt stronger to me even than those around race. Um, you know, that it was a bigger issue, um, and then a double whammy if you were a woman of color. Um, right? So, um, so the, the, the gender piece is definitely there. Um, and now I wished I'd called it out a little more explicitly in the recommendations.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to thank you again for, for doing this for our districts. Um, there, there are very few things in my years on school committee that I've read that I feel like every resident in town should read. Um, because it, 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 it feels like it, it really comes and, and hits at the heart of, of a longstanding core problem in town that affects not only our schools, but, but, but all of our, our public discourse. Because like when I read the, a, a lot of the examples that you had in here, it was, it was very difficult to read. But, but this kind of like abusive behavior is not surprising to read about. Um, because, because we see it happen in public to, to any kind of, um, decision maker. And, and I think that's just my, my first reaction to all of this is just how incredibly sad it is for our community that values education so much and it is so engaged and, and wants to do the right thing. But there are some number of us that can't figure out how to not cross a line into bullying, abusive, disrespectful behavior. And, and it's our kids that suffer. You know, we, we, we lose good leaders, um, and, and everything they could, could bring to our, 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 our district. Um, and, um, I, I think, you know, when, when I try and then, you know, pivot to, from those kind of raw emotions into, you know, what, what should we do about it? Um, I, I, I start with, with the thought that this is primarily the responsibility and, and, and the, the, the fault of, of the community. Because while I don't think that everybody, or even most people in town, engage in this kind of behavior, I, I, I think most people in town endorse kindness and compassion and understanding and a basic respect. Um, it's, it's, it's clearly not practiced by, by everyone. I mean, we've had really stark examples of, um, even residents who just volunteer for advisory boards getting personally attacked in our newspapers by name before they even begin their, their service. Um, and, and we just, it's like this open secret in, in town that like, oh, well, that's just Amherst where only the, the H is silent. Um, so, so I, I totally appreciate the, the recommendations for what ARPS and ARPS administration can do to support principals coming in. Um, I think the school committee should be part of that in terms of, um, advocating and supporting funding for those mentors if, if that becomes an issue. Um, but, you know, I, I really feel like the, the community, especially, you know, what I would think of as like the silent majority of us who, who, who hold kindness in our hearts about, well, what, what can we do to support people who are the targets of personal attacks? Because wh- while I'm all for outreach and having a community conversation and, and, you know, trying to appeal to, to the better angels of, of how people behave, um, uh, the reality is that's not going to reach everybody. Right? And so this is going to be something that happens, like, like there, there are bullies on the playground. And then so the, the question of the active bystander is, well, what do you do when you see someone being bullied? And, and to me, it comes down to you reach out to the target to make sure they don't feel isolated. Cause that's the real terrible damage that can be inflicted by this kind of behavior is just feeling like you're not supported. Um, and then, and then to, in a public way, support people and endorse a base level of respect. Um, in order to provide a counterbalance to these voices. Um, because I, I feel like often in, in, in Amherst, you know, we, you know, you, you, you get an email or a side conversation of someone privately saying, gosh, it's, it's really sad that this person did that or behaved that way, you know? You know, I, I want to let you know, but, you know, I, I don't feel that way. And that's, that's nice, but, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide a, a, a different, um, a different public narrative, you know, uh, for, for the person, um, to, to feel like they're being supported. And so I feel like there's, you know, we need to think about ways to, to systematically create opportunities for parents, for staff, for members of the community who, who want to, um, actively support a, a feeling of respect, even, even if you disagree, right, with their decisions, on an actively support a foundation of kindness and respect. I, I, I think that's, that's what we need to work on. But I, 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 I most of all feel like this is the community's problem to, to acknowledge and, and work on together.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Anyone? Anyone? Uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't click my little button. I guess I just wanted to say I really appreciate, um, having this report. And, um, in some ways I don't find it surprising. Um, I've lived here a long time and have seen these things in small ways, not, I've seen it in my work, um, when I was working. When I was working, especially the gender issue. So I really appreciate sort of having this all laid out. I think it's very important for us to see this upfront. And, and there's a way in which I'm surprised we are. But I think it's great and I, I think there's work to do. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I just really want to thank Rick because I think, uh, one of the comments from one of the leaders who was not part of the interview process. They said it felt like an ethnography of a role and of people in that role. And I think, I think that was a great term because it really, you know, Ricky used the word stories and, and, and I really appreciated that about the work. And, you know, I really appreciate on my end, the roadmap you set out in terms of how to support leaders. I think, you know, for, for the committee members, I think we need to continue this conversation at the, at the representative committees. So this is a joint meeting and, uh, I think it, it was great because you could hear it from Rick instead of someone else describing Rick's work. But I do hope that we're able to continue the dialogue around it and, and, and really, you know, bluntly connected to what we started the meeting with, which is my goals, right? And so, you know, I think, I think there's a good segue to think about future goals along this dimension because of the critical nature of the work. I really want to thank the, the leaders, some of them are watching now, some may not be, both past and present leaders, who took time out of their busy days to spend time sharing with Rick about their experiences, someone they hadn't met before. And certainly reading the report, I know it rung true for what people have told me over the years. And I think, you know, to the point earlier about whether people are being honest, I think, I appreciate that Rick made it anonymized it. And anonymizing it, you know, it makes it a little easier to read, I'm sure. I don't know what the stories are behind other than what I'm aware of, but what I'm aware of would, would, would certainly add some relatability, but it would lose the, and then the anonymous nature of, you know, that we guarantee people who are participating. And, you know, and I do plan to follow up with, you know, again, the relevant committees in the future around this work. But there, there's few things I do that I feel like are more important than make sure that school leaders have what they need to be successful in their buildings. I'm not just saying that because the research indicates, I'm saying that as a former school leader, right? And, and knowing the role difference between what I currently do and I used to do, it's not better or worse, it's not harder or easier, but it's, it's different work. It's much more on the ground. And as in my role, I've seen the difference when people, you know, were able to feel successful and, and be successful in this community. And, and when they've had a harder time with it. And so, you know, I just want to share publicly, I'm dedicated to doing, you know, our work and my work around this. I think to Jennifer's really good point about gender, Doreen and I talk about that frequently. We sort of mapped out all the hiring that's been done in the five and a half years I've been in this role around school leaders. And, and then the longevity and there's a, there's a gap, as you noted, between who gets hired and then who stays. And Rick noted it, but you noted as well, Jennifer, and that's spot on in addition to the race piece, which is obviously, you know, relevant for everyone in the organization as well. So, you know, I really appreciate how you were able to frame and, and take stories and weave it into a narrative that rang true for our team. Rick did meet with our leadership team, those who participated, those who did not before this, before this meeting. So they were able to hear and respond to this as well. Uh, and the report was shared with the former leaders who participated, so they had access to it. And one or two of them made a point to tell me that they felt like it was cathartic, right? That, that just, it wasn't only them, right? And sometimes in roles like the principal, which can feel a little isolating, there's one principal in the building, right? There's, there's one of them. And so there's assistant principals, other people, but there's one person with that role, there's value. So another thing that I've taken away from it, that's not really in your recommendations, Rick, but, but it's, it's loosely in, but just more explicitly is to make sure that, that the leaders have opportunities to be able to talk about their experiences more collaboratively and more regularly than COVID has sort of allowed over the last two years. You know, I think, I think the point you raised, Rick, that came from folks that is spot on, that, that, you know, well, new cell, health and safety regs this week, so now we're, you know, and that becomes our focus. And sometimes, you know, we don't want to lose the forest for the trees and the forest is making sure our principals feel supported and feel connected to one another. And I think they do, and I think the report showed that in many ways, but I think we have gotten away from problems with practice and more deep dialogues on matters that aren't health and safety. I think collectively, we've gotten away from some of that just because of the nature of the pandemic, not just principals, but as an organization. And, you know, how to right set that over time as the pandemic continues in the form that it is, it's going to be a challenge that we have, but it's one that I want to take on. So long-winded way of saying thank you. It was a very, very helpful report for me personally. I know me and myself and Doreen have talked multiple times about it. Maybe the last thing I want to say is, uh, if you go back to Doreen and the human resources report the last couple of years, one thing that she's always stressed is the work they're doing to try to make ARPS a more welcoming place for folks who are new to the organization. That includes, you know, both school leaders, but also staff members and some of the challenges that, that people have cited. And, and so I really do want to connect this report. I don't think Rick's ever read any of those HR reports that, you know, we do every fall. But there really is a through line to some of the things that, that were shared by the HR team and the report today. And so, you know, that was one of the reasons, like, oh, you know, this, this report is really aligning with some of the work that, that we're working on and some of the problems that we're having that we're trying to resolve over time. So, you know, thank you very much. Thanks for your time and thanks for meeting with our folks.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. So have a great night. Thank you. And, um, so we are moving on to joint committee, public comments. I don't have any written public comments, but Allison was there? Some voicemails? Yep, go ahead.
I believe there were two written public comments that came in today. But I also, yes, I do have voicemail public comment. I don't see region only public comments, so is it okay to share it now during the joint?
They were, they were region specific?
It's not related to the joint meeting topic.
Yes, we can bump those down.
Okay. So I'll play that, but I do believe there were two written ones.
Happy day. My name is Bennett. I live in Amherst. I'm a parent of a middle schooler and forever fourth grader. This school year has been so much better than the last one, but thank you for getting us back in school. I'm calling today because today that we're the first to watch the post reports. And ready for children between the ages of six months and five years by the end of February, which is great news. That would mean that school age children from kindergarten through twelfth grade, as well as their siblings older than fifth month, will have access to the vaccine very soon. Combined data shows no one type of the virus on most children, regardless of vaccine status and the fact that teachers have already had access to the vaccine for nearly a year. I think the school committee should begin mapping out a timeline and metrics for a return to school without masks, as well as a return to the social events that usually mark the middle and high school experiences. I am not an anti-mask warrior. I live in a house full of K to 95 boxes and rack of test kits. It feels like every time I leave my car, a mask falls out. Personally, I've said many times over the course of this pandemic that mask wearing is not a big deal for kids. Most just do it without much stress or complaint, and I consider their behavior a model for many adults. It makes it easy to continue masking definitely out of abundance of caution. Wearing masks may not have been a huge deal to many as may now to be, but it's not nothing either, especially when it comes to language acquisition and psychosocial development. Now we're two years in, we have widely available vaccines. And I think we need to acknowledge what science has done for us and acknowledge the strength, persistence and patience of these kids that allow them to attend school without wearing a mask. Finally, once these vaccines are approved for the youngest of months. Thanks for hearing me out and thank you for your work.
I'm searching frantically for the written public comments right now. I cannot find them.
Do you want me to try to share?
Yes, please.
Is that big enough?
Yep.
It's showing up really tiny on my screen. That's why I'm not sure. I believe that was it.
That case, I will turn it over to the Amherst School Committee Chair.
Do you want to open the floor for any in-meeting participants or no?
Oh, yes, yes, we will take live. We can take live. I have to get used to that. I like it though. See any hands, community members? You can use the raised hand function and I will call on you if there are any community members that have a public comment here. Claire Bertrand.
Hi, thank you. I would just like to particularly thank all of you for reaching out for this kind of report. This is like an honest look in the mirror and I'm so proud of us for taking this step. So what I would just encourage is that we take the next harder step, which is action items. What are we going to do about this? I agree. Somebody stated that really this is about us as a community. I totally agree. And I wa, I want to say I'm committed to figuring out how to be a part of a solution here. So I would love to see next step, action items when appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Go ahead and raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. See any other hands coming up? So now then I'll turn it over to the Amherst Chair.
Thank you. Um, I move that we adjourn the Amherst School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Allison, seconded by Jennifer. Let's take a roll call vote. Uh, Peter?
Peter, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Herb?
Herb, I.
Ben?
Ben, I.
And Allison, I. We are adjourned. And I'll turn it over to Chair Hall.
All right, I move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
All right, moved by Hall, seconded by Stanser? Yes, okay, seconded by Stanser. All right, we'll do roll call vote. Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Sarah Best?
Sarah Best, I.
Brenda? Oh, you're on mute, Brenda. Okay, Brenda's eyeing and Sarah, I. All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
All right, we can start off with the approval of the minutes from, I guess we'll start with the January 8th, four-town meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to, to look those over? Go ahead. Oh, Jennifer, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, so I made a comment in that meeting about an exercise that might be fun where each town pretends to be from another town and look, look at all, look at the numbers from that town's perspective, which I still think is a fun exercise we should consider doing. I don't see it in the minutes and I just, I wanted to make sure it's reflected because it's, it's something I don't want to forget about. So I don't know, like, how does it work if we want to add something like to? I don't know, it's supposed to work.
Right, do we have to do the, the exact wording here? Peter, is that what you were responding to?
Yeah, I mean, you could just say, you know, suggest an edit and then we can move to approve the minutes as amended. So if you want it to be as, you know, uh, I guess, I guess stated exactly as, as, as you, as you're able to and Maileen's probably.
Yeah, I see, I see Maileen put something in the chat that she can add the comment when she revises the minutes, so I, I'm fine with that.
So I'll take Allison.
Um, the, the minutes note that I was present and I was not present.
All right. Anyone else have any? Any additions, corrections or anything? All right, so I will move, I move to approve the draft minute, the minutes from the Saturday, January 8th, 2022, four towns meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sarah Best. Oh, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, um, did you mean to say move to approve those as amended?
Yes, I, I meant to say move to approve the meetings from Saturday, January 8th, 2022, as amended here tonight. And Sarah Best, having seconded that, I'll take a roll call vote. So Allison?
Abstain.
Solid. Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Steven?
Sullivan, I.
Peter?
Peter, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Sarah Best?
Sarah Best, I.
And me, Ben, I? This is with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven eyes and one abstention? I have the number eight, all right. So we will move on to the January 18th minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to make from that? So minutes. Allison?
Yeah, in the section about the subcommittee appointments, um, just a couple small edits, the budget subcommittee. Um, I, I believe that as of now, Margaret is still chair, but it notes, um, I can't remember who else it noted. It might be just the comma was in the wrong place. I don't know. Um, the contract negotiating subcommittee, and I'm the chair. And I'm not sure, oh, on the evaluation subcommittee, it said Irving. I think it should be Rhodes.
Any other input? So entertain a motion. Go ahead, Peter.
Move to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2022, as amended.
Second.
So moved by Peter, seconded by Jennifer, we'll take a roll call vote. Sarah Best?
Sarah Best, I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Peter?
Emily, I.
Stephen?
Sullivan, I.
And Allison?
Allison, I.
Margaret?
Margaret, I.
And me, Ben, I. The motion passes unanimously. So now we're moving on to the superintendent's update.
Yep, thank you, and I'll try to be brief. Something that was discussed in the capital process last year was a solar design feasibility study. Some of that came from high school students who advocated with our state representative Dom to do that. And so since the town also had a solar feasibility project, it made sense to join forces with the town and the region so that we could, you know, make a large enough project to get more bidders. That was successful and we're in the process, the town is taking the lead primarily on this, of finishing a contract and that work will be completed by June 30th and that'll be listed in the contract. So more to come on that front, but you know, it was looking at where there is solar possibilities in the regional schools and we'll combine it with the town to bring back to the region again this spring. So as we think about the future, we're able to think, you know, we're able to speak more knowledgeably about what's possible, what's not possible. You know, there's been talk of the canopies in parking lots, there's been talk about when the middle school roof gets redone, does that have the capacity? And people like me shouldn't be answering those questions and we've hired people who have expertise in this area to do work on that. So I really want to thank the high school students who a couple of years ago started advocacy with our state rep, our state rep for figuring out an earmark that we could use for this project. And then the results of it will really, you know, drive decision-making for the regional schools and the four towns going forward about solar feasibility onsite. Thank you for passing your vaccine, staff vaccine mandate policy. We now have completed our survey of staff and 94% of our staff are fully vaccinated, which was a higher number. Some of it was just making sure that we got to everybody and they were able to respond. Some people got vaccinated more recently with the rise of Omicron. We offered a number of opportunities of our staff members to both get booster but also first and second shot onsite. And, you know, people like me would love it to be 100%, but 94% is pretty high for an organization. So really thankful and happy and proud to share that and thank you to our staff because that's certainly contributing to the safety of our students and community. We're fortunate that numbers are getting better. COVID numbers are getting better. They're not, they're not at zero, they're not close to zero, but they are getting better. And both the state level but also what we're seeing locally, we update our COVID dashboard every weekday with our numbers and you can see the longitudinal, today's obviously the first day in a new month. But if you look at January from when we got back to yesterday, you see a significant drop in, in numbers on daily basis, both of staff and students. So really pleased to see things heading in the right direction statewide. You know, we're seeing that also positive trend. And as a result, we've worked, working with the Amherst Health Department, made some decisions. So we reduced last week, or starting Sunday I should say, we were limiting attendance at athletic events. We were able to loosen that with the, with the strong support of our nurse leader as well as our town health director. Fortunately and fortuitously, I guess, or serendipitously, it coincided with senior night events that have occurred this week. This is towards the end of the regular season, so that was, played no role in our decision-making, but it was a happy accident that our numbers have declined at a place where those students who have had three unusual years of their four years of high school are able to, you know, be celebrated and be celebrated by their school community this week. So we've been really pleased with that. I want to again thank Athletic Director Stuart, who has been stewarding a very, very complicated process for the last two years and offering the students this opportunity. I know I have a question, I received a question about what about dramatic performances? I'll be meeting with the Performing Arts Chair later this week and then doubling back with the health director, it was less imminent. So we got the athletic decision first, we're trying to think through for dramatic performances what's possible. But we're trying to, you know, take logical, reasonable steps towards providing more opportunity for more of our students to celebrate as a school community. You know, I know there's, I've received a number of emails in the last week or so about, you know, masking and when places can go mask optional. You know, at this point, there still is a mask mandate in the town of Amherst. And so at this point, it's a bit of a moot point on that and I'm in frequent contact multiple times a week with the health director in the town. And at this point, her opinion, and I tend to agree with it, or I don't tend to, I agree with it, is not yet. It's not to say that we don't need to have those conversations. I'm not someone who believes that everyone will be masked indefinitely. You know, while I don't think masks cause irreparable harm to students, there is an impact to our students and staff. So I think we're trying to figure out, follow the numbers, see what it's like as things get warmer, hopefully our numbers continue to decline. But the other piece is that the CDC still recommends, or is maintaining the recommendation that universal masking in schools is best practice. So we make these decisions based on health experts, not, you know, I don't consider, you know, we're all become a little more health experts than we used to be, but there's a danger of believing that we are health experts because we read a lot of articles. And for me, it's really having conversations with, with folks who are in that role. So we all want a return to normalcy, think the pace at which that comes and if that really ever comes true normalcy and this, in the next four or five months, I think that's an open question. But you know, what I try to do is just stay in contact with the health folks to make the best decisions for our community, you know. And I think while we have heard some, from some folks who would like us to do that a little quicker maybe than, than I'm getting recommendations from, there's also a number of families who'd be quite, quite concerned and staff members quite concerned if we were expediting a de-masking process ahead of many other communities in our local areas. So, you know, we'll, we'll still keep talking about it, it's not a conversation I'm trying to avoid, quite the opposite. But I think all the indications right now are not yet, as it relates to that. We adopted the state's method about rapid tests. So today, yesterday afternoon, depending what school you worked in, or today, staff members who signed up for the rapid test program, were able to receive two rapid tests and students will receive them before the end of the week. So students who signed up, our participation's high, I think across our organization, it's between two-thirds and three-quarters, closer to three-quarters of folks signed up for the rapid tests and people can continue to sign up. We had a deadline that was this first shipment, but we already are having people sign up more and we've already adjusted up our next set of shipments because more people have decided to join the program. So we're strongly recommending that, we put out days of the week. So for folks who are participating in pool testing, alternating that if they're asymptomatic, you know, pool testing is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So trying to think of, depending on your school, doing a Friday, Saturday, Sunday so that you're getting twice a week but not on consecutive days. Certainly if anyone's symptomatic, we encourage the use immediately of those rapid tests. We also started a program with our existing supply where anyone who themselves or is a family member test positive can email closecontacts@arms.org. We didn't change the email address, we're using it for something else beforehand, but since people know it, we're just going to stick with it and receive a box of tests so that they can test other family members. We have had people accessing that program so far, that's as long as our supply lasts. But it's a service we want to provide to the community because we know that it's, yes, it affects our schools, but it's a community health challenge that we're all facing. And the last is a sad note. So Brian Ecclestone, who is a longtime staff member in our district, worked as the AV and media coordinator, resident of Pelham, great supporter of Pelham School even after he retired, passed away recently. We got a long letter that was shared at the Pelham School Committee meeting last week from former music teachers across the three districts about the incredible work he did to provide community events. He did, he, he was at every community event, he solved all sorts of problems and he was someone who could look at a new system or an outdated system, which we have both, and still solve problems and do it with a smile and work so well with teachers. So these were mostly retired music teachers who wrote a long note to me as well as some other folks and I just want to acknowledge Brian and acknowledge his passing and it's something that certainly we've talked about on our, you know, folks who are around when Brian was working for the district. He retired a couple of years ago, felt deeply affected when we heard of this loss last week. So I want to share that, use this opportunity to share that with our community and really appreciate that we have folks who are, who, many of whom retired several years ago, not just one or two, who still felt so connected to Brian that they wanted to reach out and share their thoughts with me about the impact of his work. So I sort of end on a sad note, but I do want to celebrate Brian and someone who worked in every school with, at every performance as I said and just had a huge impact on our students and the larger community based on his work. So thank you for giving me the time to say that, share that and certainly happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
I'll open it up to questions or comments. Go once, twice. All right, so I don't really have much of a chair's update moving on other than to kind of update about the school equity advisory committee. We had our first reorganization meeting last Thursday and we'll be meeting again on the 17th of February at 6:30 PM. Trying to get as many folks involved as humanly possible with that. So I'll move on, I'll take school committee announcements next. If there's any members, Peter?
Yeah, so CPAC meets this Friday at nine o'clock, 45-minute meeting. It's nice to check in with the board, you can hear about a bunch of stuff, it's very interesting. CPAC@arms.org for more information on that. The policy subcommittee met last Monday and I have to say, the new reorg group I think is off to a really good start. It's me, Jennifer, Sarah Best, Stephen and Deb Westmoreland. And not only do we have a few items up, up on this agenda, but we're currently, started a large process of seeing what old policies might be able to be easily archived. So we're in the middle of reviewing 25 of those at the moment, split the work up. So I think it's going to be a very efficient subcommittee, so expect to see policy items on a regular basis coming your way.
Perfect, thank you. Margaret?
There, just wanted to say that there will be a budget subcommittee meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 and we will be doing our reorg then.
Thank you. Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, brief update from Leverett School, we missed six school days because of the broken sprinkler above the nurse's ceiling. And most of the work has been done, but it was decided that February vacation would be basically canceled. The kids will be in school for the four days of February vacation to, to help make up those, we're calling them sprinkler days in Leverett. So we'll see how that goes.
Thank you for that. Allison?
Just a quick, the negotiations subcommittee has met many times recently, including last night. And our next meeting is Monday and we, we as the full school committee have an executive session on Thursday where we'll update on that.
Perfect, thank you. Any more announcements from?
So I mentioned that superintendent update maybe two or three months ago and it piqued the curiosity of a couple of committee members. They asked to hear a little more and so folks are here to share a little bit more. But I greatly appreciate, especially given the context of the year we're having, that we have this great work going on in our middle school. So Sarah, am I turning it over to you? Do you want to, I can open it up so you can share your slides or I can show them for you, whatever is easier for you.
That would be great if I can share, thank you. I see that I can do that now. Okay, can everyone see that all right? Wonderful. And it started at the end for me, so you're getting a preview of all of my slides. Okay, I am Dr. Sarah Pfeffer. I'm an associate professor of school psychology at UMass Amherst in the College of Education and I am so glad to be here today to talk to you about promoting well-being in middle school students. And while we are doing this at ARMS and with other middle schools here in Massachusetts and in Florida, is we are working to promote well-being because it matters for student success. So what we know from extensive research from several decades is that happier children and adolescents do better in school, have better physical health, better social relationships and experience less negative symptoms of mental health. From our funder, the goal of this project is to evaluate the efficacy of an innovative tier-two school-based intervention. This is based on the science of positive psychology specifically, which is a little different than what we often think about in terms of mental health promotion among students in schools. This program, the Well-Being Promotion Program, was developed with multiple purposes in mind. One is to increase subjective well-being, which is the scientific term for happiness. We also worked to create a program that could be used by school mental health teams specifically. So we wanted to make sure that this could be embedded within a multi-tiered system of support for student mental health in schools. This project is a five-year multi-site project and this is our very first year. We chose to work with ARMS and another middle school in Western Mass as our first sites because of previous partnerships related to this type of work with multi-tiered systems of support to support the success of all students. And we knew that Amherst would be a wonderful partner for us to focus on student outcomes and also to get information about training and implementation of school-based mental health staff in this multi-tiered model. We also sought out to better understand the cost-effectiveness and we're chipping away at that goal as well. So when I say multi-tiered systems of supports, I often think of this triangle right here with tier-one supports for all students, with tier-two supports for some students and tier-three supports for few students who demonstrate a need for more intensive supports. So these are layered on top of one another in that all students receive tier-one supports, those who demonstrate a need for more receive more, often in the form of small groups and then individualized more intensive support. So I'm going to turn it over to Doreen to talk a little bit more about what this looks like at ARMS and then I'll jump back in with more about our happiness project.
Thanks, Sarah. So at ARMS, with our tier-one level of support, we offer a TRAILs curriculum. TRAIL stands for Transforming Research into Action to Improve Lives of Students. It focuses on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making with our youth. In addition to that, we have a restorative cultural coordinator who works on restorative justice, Dr. Gail Prissette. Her work entails supporting students in restorative practice strategies to teach our students skills on how to make good decisions. To teach our students skills on how to make good decisions, to resolve conflicts with one another or with adults. To resolve them peacefully and to build relationships and interpersonal skills. Dr. GB provides one-on-one mentorships for students, she holds restorative circles. All sessions with students and provides a supportive and safe space for students where they can drop in unannounced to talk with her. About any problems or concerns they may have, it's a it's a reset in order to get the students back to class. Our tier two. Model consists of, of course, our well-being promotion program with Dr. Pfeffer. But also our social emotional learning curriculum, as well as our partnership with River Valley Counseling. River, we partnered with River Valley to provide school-based mental health counseling during the school day. For students to really remove the barriers such as scheduling conflicts, insurance coverages, transportation concerns. And our counselors from River Valley come in a couple of times a week to check in with our students and actually provide one-on-one counseling. In addition to that, we have a tier two intervention counselor. And she's working on push-in supports through social emotional learning. Navigating strong emotions with students, effectively dealing with stress, building healthy relationships and choosing healthy behaviors. And then moving up to tier three, we really focus on the more intense involvement, so we have our. Four programs that we offer at the the Amherst Regional Middle School. We offer our student support program for students with social emotional challenges. We offer our aims program for students who have neurodiversity issues and concerns and challenges. We also offer our essential skills program for students who have are on the higher need of our autism scale. And also those students who had cognitive limitations. In addition to that, we have a bright program. Our bright program, there's a lot of acronyms in education, right? So this acronym stands for Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. And the focus there, pardon me, is really to work on clinical supports. It's a reentry program for students who have extended absences. Whether it be for a mental health absence or a surgery to re-engage them, re-immersed them in the school environment. The clinical supports is academic coordination and case management, there's family engagement and support. And then there's care coordination, so if in fact we have students that need more support, we can offer students connections with outside community agencies. Overwatching on that, we have our in-school structural support, so we have our student support team, our child study team. And we also have our collaboration with the family center. So lots of supports that we're offering right now, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Doreen, so as you can see, there's a full continuum of supports at ARMS. And our program, the well-being promotion program, really fits within tier two of this continuum. And our goal here is to focus and refocus in schools on complete mental health. Not just on the negative indicators of mental illness or problems, but also on positive indicators of mental wellness or well-being. And that's with the overarching goal of decreasing risk factors and symptoms among our students. While also increasing promoted factors and focusing on how to build resilience among our students. So this really brings together a variety of approaches, so our program is focused on positive psychology. As you heard Doreen talk about, social emotional learning is very much a part of this as well. We also have programs like positive behavioral supports and restorative justice in order to focus on some of these more negative indicators. Of mental illness and trauma-informed care, so all of these things together is how we achieve complete mental health. And we bring that this positive psychology slice to the picture. So I have this timeline here for us just to kind of show how much we've accomplished with ARMS this year. So back in August, we trained three counselors from ARMS in this program, they became certified. As interventionists in the well-being promotion program. Then we engaged in a school-wide screening, so we notified caregivers of the screening, which was conducted by the school. All students were screened and then we identified 27% of students with room for growth and happiness. So this includes the majority of students being screened. I'll say more about that in the next slide, how this looks in terms of the specifics of ARMS. Then we invited students for participation. We now have completed the entire 10-week program of well-being promotion. We did this by collecting consent, assigning students for our research procedures to receive the intervention now. Or receive the intervention next spring as our later group. We also provided caregiver information sessions. The small groups met one time a week for 10 sessions and this fit very nicely into the guided study block that's been added to the schedule for all students. And we engage in weekly coaching with the interventionist to ensure that the intervention was being delivered and that they felt confident in supporting the students. We also have program evaluation, which focuses on mental health, student engagement, academic achievement, as well as the overall acceptability. Of adults and students to having this program in the school. So we've done all of this since August 2021, which is extremely impressive how hard this school has been working. With my research team to make this happen for students at ARMS. So we started with 413 students at ARMS in the fall. 317 of those students were able to complete the well-being screening. This excludes any student who did not have parent permission to participate, so with that active notification of parents, parents were able to opt out. So any caregiver who opted out, their student was not included or any student who was absent on the day of screening. So out of those 370 17 students, we had 87 students who met our eligibility criteria. And that's what I'm showing here, this screening focused on happiness, so again, positive indicator of wellness and mental health. And it's very important to note that the students that we're serving in this program are not those on the lowest end of the scale. It's the bottom 25% of all of these ratings of life satisfaction broadly, as well as domain-specific. As well as positive net and negative affect. We chose to look at domain-specific life satisfaction since those items are most specific to school experience. And only students who had scores below mostly satisfied were included, so that's a broad range of students. Not just students who are reporting being unhappy, but student, anyone who is less than mostly satisfied on that scale on average. Was invited to participate, we had parent permission for 41 to take part in the study. And we currently serve this year, we just wrapped up 21 students assigned to receive the program this year and 20 who will receive the program next year. So now we're engaged in data collection, which involves interviews with students and interventionists, which has been a blast to hear about the experience of these students. And hear about their experience with this intervention. So this is a book that's available through Guilford, my colleague and collaborator on this project is the author. Of this curriculum and a positive psychology expert who came here from Florida to train our wonderful ARMS interventionists. And this program focuses in three domains across the 10 weeks. Past positive activities that can help us reflect more positively on our past, which includes gratitude journals and gratitude visits. Activities that focus on happiness in the present, which includes acts of kindness. Identifying and using our signature character strengths that are individual to each of us, as well as methods to savor positive feelings when those occur. Then lastly, the last few sessions focus on how to build positive emotions about the future. So talking about hope and setting pathways to meet future goals, as well as optimistic thinking. And our overarching goal here is to strengthen relationships for students in order to increase their overall well-being. So that is all I have for you today, I'm so honored to be here to talk to you about this, thank you for inviting me. If you have any questions, feel free to contact Doreen or myself and I'm happy to answer questions right now as well.
Yeah, so thank you very much for your your presentation and also as a. As the parent of a middle school student, thank you for taking this on, this is very important. Let's go ahead and dive right in and open up the floor for some questions or comments here. Peter.
Yeah, so thank you very much for for showing us, this is a great place to see us investing some time in. So do you have any sense yet of like, like what, how the students have have reacted to this in terms of just their personal experience? You know, and I know you, you know, finished analyzing, you know, the work, but just initial anecdotes or or comments from teachers about about impact of any of the. The things that that have been part of the program.
Absolutely, so as you said, we haven't started any sort of formal analysis, we actually just wrapped up our last makeup session of session 10 today. So very hot off the press news here. So what we have heard from students is really mixed, actually, so some students are quite pleased that they now have learned. Positive activities, that they had a chance to receive this type of support in school has been very well received by some. And confusing for others, they are not used to school-wide screening or focus on happiness. And we've had some very interesting and informative conversations from the middle school perspective about. Hey, this is kind of cool, but we've never done anything like this before, like should should we, should we be here, is this cool? And those conversations are really fun, but it it is mixed in terms of their their qualitative responses that I've heard thus far. About their thinking about the program, whether it works to have it in school. The other feedback that I would say I've gotten more than anything else is that they really like their guided study period and don't like to miss it. So that's been really interesting too, they're saying, please take take me for happiness project at any other time. This time is really great, I'm getting help from my teachers or I'm able to see my friends, so that's been an interesting and informative. Reflection from the middle schoolers themselves.
And Sarah Bass.
I just want to say thanks for taking this on, I mean, we all know middle school is really challenging for all people involved in middle school, right? Like the kids, the parents, the teachers, like everything, middle school is just hard. And so taking some time to look at different ways to promote mental health, especially given our current circumstances with the way lots of things are going right now. I I just wanted to say thank you, I really appreciate the study and and you know, taking the time to to do this with our school and our kids and so, thanks.
Thank you, and I am so happy myself that our Institute of Education Sciences federal funding. Is going towards this work and the fact that I'm able to partner with schools in the community that I love. Here in Western Mass and bring this program that's never been implemented in Massachusetts here is such an honor and I am so psyched that this is one that the. The Institute of Ed Science says is a worthy cause.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mike, and. Yep.
Yeah, just very briefly, I want to thank Sarah, but I also really want to thank Doreen from the middle school perspective. And Fay in terms of shepherding things along from the administrative perspective. Because it's it's one thing to have great ideas and then putting them into practice is is going to be the challenge and and both of them, both those folks and particularly during a spent a tremendous amount of time. Connecting in the research, Sarah with staff, so I just wanted to share my appreciation.
Fay and then I'll I'll take Alison.
So I'm just gonna kind of ditto what Mike just said and thanks to Sarah. And particularly for Sarah continuing to pursue this for years because this is a grant that Sarah has been trying to get funded by. The Fed organization for years and I think it's just the timing of it was couldn't have been better. Because we all know, and I think I really appreciate how school committee has talked about this. And Mike has made it as a district goal to really focus on the well-being and student mental health. So to add another piece and another slice to how we try to promote well-being and to help our. I I love how someone said middle school is a challenging time anyway. Nobody ever says they want to be 13 again, it is developmentally a very unstable time. And to bring this project into our middle school. And to get the kind of qualitative feedback that the students are giving, I I love when we get to hear student voice on that. So thank you, Sarah and Doreen for finding the time and the wherewithal to kind of make this happen on a day-to-day basis. When there are so many other things, I I think it's really a testament to the dedication to our students, so thank you all.
Thank you.
And Alison.
I'll try to, yeah, I'll try to be quick. You mentioned that there's a group of students that went this year and that a group of students happening next year, so what is what is just. Super brief because I know we're we're running late, but what what is the plan for next year, are there, are you? Is it going to be a revision to based on the learnings from this year, is it to compare the difference, I'm just curious as to what's happening next year.
So the students who are assigned to the later condition will be receiving the same intervention that has. Emerging evidence base so that they can access the same program that the students this year access. The reason we have some to now and some for later is twofold, one is feasibility. Doreen, the counselor at ARMS are working so hard to fit this in their very busy schedule, so that's one aspect. And our research procedures are very much strengthened by a randomized design where we randomly assign students to two groups. So that we can compare the trajectory for the students who have not received the intervention to those who are receiving the intervention. But they will receive the same intervention, those that will be moving to the high school will have some options because we did screen eighth graders as well, so they'll be at the high school next year. We will either work with the high school to implement the program during the school day there. Although this project has been in partner with the middle school, we have not yet approached high schools about that possibility. So we therefore have a alternate proposal, which is a self-directed program that's available for adolescents. So they can access the same materials, the same positive activities in that past, present, future organization. On their own, if we're not able to embed it in the high school schedule. Thank you, excellent questions.
Alright, anyone else here? Alright, so thank you once again for for coming out tonight.
Thank you, thanks for having me, take care, everyone.
Thanks, you too. And so we will pause for a five-minute break here, I have 8:10, so 8:15, we'll be right back here, perfect. All right. Looks like we're trickling back here. Everyone. There is a we have Stephen and Margaret back. Are you in earshot? All right. So let's get back to back to business here. So school choice hearing. Would you like to set that up, Mike?
Sure. So each year, every school committee in Massachusetts has a school choice hearing. It's an opportunity to hear from members of the public before typically at the next meeting or an upcoming meeting where the school committee would vote whether to be a school choice district, which means that you accept school choice students or not. And so part of the responsibility of school committees have a public hearing. And so it opens up for public comment on this topic. In the past, we have mostly been a school choice district at the region. I think one or two years we paused on that. And part of that pause was we're having so many school choice students come naturally up through the elementary schools that we didn't have a lot of empty seats. And so we paused on it. This year, we're expecting very, very limited seats, perhaps in the ninth grade. We try to prioritize transition years. We find that our students do better if they're come to us either in seventh grade for the full middle school experience or in ninth grade for the full high school experience. Our numbers, given that we caught a half team at the middle school, it's unlikely that we would accept any school choice students who are new to our schools at the seventh grade level. However, at the ninth grade level, I think that's a conversation we can have next time. I wanted to provide the context, both for the committee, but also for the community. So if people do want to weigh in with comments, they have a little bit of the current status. At the current time, students who are school choice students, the elementary schools from our four communities do naturally come up. In a couple of years, that's going to change based on a legal change that happened at Desi, but the grandfathering in, I don't know a better word for that. I don't love that word, but I'm going to use grandfathering in of those students still applies for another three years. So all the choice students in Amherst, Pelham, Leverett and Chootsberry will naturally flow up, particularly as Leverett became a school choice district seven years several years ago, which historically was not. We've we've and Chootsberry and Pelham have increasingly relied on choice. It is a we have a lot of choices in the region, even though we don't accept choice students in the region, if that makes sense. Because they naturally flow up to us. They still count as choice students, but we there's not an application process. They just naturally flow to us from the elementary levels and then municipalities. But it's something we'll come to next time. I thought maybe because the region's a little more complicated, I'd provide a little more context. If there is public comment on the topic, we would be slated to speak about this, potentially vote on it either at the 15th or the March 1st meeting, whatever the chair so decides.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from the committee? Jennifer?
I have questions, but do I ask them now or are they for next is it for next? Since this is a public hearing, is this should I ask my questions now or is it for later?
My recommendation would be open up for the public, see if there are comments. And then if there are questions for tonight, since you're not making a decision, I think it's totally fair to have questions come up tonight. That'd be my recommendation for the chair.
All right. So this time I'll entertain public comments. You can go ahead and raise your hand to use the raising hand feature if that applies. Doesn't seem like we have live public comments. So now I'll open it up to the committee. Jennifer?
So I'm new to this and Mike, you just said a lot of things that I I didn't quite get all of them. So currently, students who are choice into K through six do come up to the arms and the high school. But the there's a new state law that's going to stop that from happening, but the students that are already in the pipeline will be allowed to to come through. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so because of that, we haven't in the we haven't recently accepted school choice students in the region in the middle school and high school?
We've we've done. We've done different things the last few years. In general, our practice has been to be a school choice district. Take a look at numbers, particularly late in the spring of either eighth grade going to ninth grade or sixth grade going to seventh grade and open up a small number of seats at those transition grade levels.
Okay. Okay. So you're saying in the past, we have opened up at seventh and ninth. I thought I thought you also said just now that we that we probably would not do seventh grade.
It's unlikely with our current numbers of sixth graders, you know, we wait till a little bit till spring because not every sixth grader who is at one of the elementary districts chooses to go to our middle school, the vast majority do. But we try to get better numbers of registration before we would make a decision on that. What the school committee vote on is simply will the region accept school choice students or not? We typically in the enrollment report in the fall, come back with what our numbers are in terms of how many choice students we have. The number of students we accept for school choice who are new to the region is tends to be significantly lower than the aggregate number of choice students because most of them are inherited. And there's one year where I know the regions are just to finish responding because I don't think I answered one part of your question. There was one year at least where the region chose not to accept school choice students in the last five.
And when when and if this committee votes not to accept choice students, we would still take the ones that are existing in the pipeline, right?
Yeah, that's not you don't have an option.
Yeah, okay. I guess my other question is, how how and when do we know what the enrollment is going to be, what the numbers are going to be in in seventh and ninth or in the you said in the spring, we got to get an idea, but how and when do we know that?
Yeah. So generally, in the transition years, we accept in the spring, we'll do visits and this show will be able to do it where counselors will come, students will register for the middle school. At that point, students who are going to other sites often will inform us that they're going to a different school setting. Not always, but we get a better number of the yield. We get a better estimate of the yield in the spring and the same for eighth grade to ninth grade. We feel pretty reliable about our eighth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade numbers. The challenge, especially at the upper grade levels at the high school, is the the demand on elective seats is so great that any choice student we take in adds to that demand problem. And we struggle to increase the supply to meet that demand. So that's really why we think about the transition years. You know, my recommendation, you know, I'll formalize it when we talk about it again, is likely to be a choice district because I do think there may be opportunities, particularly in ninth grade to accept a small number of students, but a small number of students does contribute to our budget. And we benefit from having non financial. We have non financial benefits from accepting school choice students as well. They add a tremendous amount to our community in all sorts of ways. They're generally attracted based on the values that our community has. And they are some of the most active involved families that we have. If you look at PGOs and other ways, we have a lot of active involvement from choice families. So there's financial aspect, but there's a non financial aspect that really benefits the district as well. It's really just at the regional level. It's really about capacity because there's this enrollment question. Because it's transition points, there's also the question of you know, what's our the elective capacity that comes up at the high school. We try to balance all of those details. But it generally the yield typically smaller and then people see the number of choice and say, oh, my God, you must take all these. But but again, the vast majority of them are inherited from the elementary level.
All right. Sarah?
Thanks. So just a clarifying question. So as a school committee, if we vote to be a school choice school, then that has no bearing on how many or if the district actually decides to take students, right? So that is just a policy level. Yes, we can choose to accept choice students if we want to. That we actually, as a school committee, have no input or influence on what that number looks like. It could be zero. It could be 150, right? Like as a school committee.
Right.
It's just, yes, you can do this or no, you can't do this.
Yeah, I'm always open to input, but I think just to be, no, I know, I just want to, I know where you're going. But yes, the decision is yes, no. And, you know, I think what we've really done and I really want to compliment the high school leadership, particularly Mickey Grumacki, who's been there throughout multiple other transitions, but Sam Cameron Talib as well. But Mickey has done it for a while. She's really done well at being able to forecast numbers, look at elective seats and make very good decisions that are borne borne out very well for us about whether to take choice students or the number to take. But you're right, there has been years where the school committee votes yes, and we actually haven't taken any new choice students because the yield was higher than we were anticipating. You know, the high school is particularly challenging because we have a lot of students. Well, the yield is harder to predict there. I'll put I'll just put it that way for a large variety of reasons. It's harder to predict there. And she does a great job, as does the team up at the high school of taking in that numbers and taking a reasonable look. And it's also the case that sometimes we'll take students in the spring and then if seats open up in the summer, we go back to our waitlist and and see. But the demand level is very high. We don't meet demand. That that's something that is true. But, you know, we had a study done. It was a while ago and it was that we were bringing in, you know, it was an incredibly efficient program and financially that we were really bringing in a lot of resources and needing to add very few staff. The practice has been not to take choice students just to to increase sections, but to simply fill seats in existing sections because financially, that's a much more sustainable approach.
So can I ask one follow up? So is there any? If this is not the right time to ask this question, that's totally fine. Tell me wait till next time. So is there any benefit to not being a school choice school? I'm I'm having a hard time seeing why as a school committee, we would say, no, you can't do this. If it's if it's bringing so many potential benefits to the students and the community and the schools as as a whole.
So I could say that there were some school members in the past who voted against it because they had a philosophical disagreement with school choice more generally. So it wasn't so much a practical vote in terms of like, oh, I don't want this to happen. Financially, it was a philosophical perspective. Steve is waving his hand. I wasn't referring to you, Steve, actually. I was referring to one of Gene's predecessors who I think was very vocal. I'm not saying you don't share that opinion, Steve, but I think this other person was quite quite vocal about it. I think you remember those conversations, Steve, very well. Steve's longest serving school member with me. And I think the second thing is that when there were years that we knew we couldn't take any choice, it just it meant that particularly the administrators at the high school, the middle school weren't getting lots of emails from families saying, well, you know, school committee said you could. And now you're telling us you can't. So, you know, the the concern about mixed messaging, I think. And so I think that's the thing. At the middle school in particular, next year, we cut the half team. But we're also know that a sixth grade cohort from at least one town is slated to come up. So we're also trying to also, you know, just factor in that in terms of size of school and scope and and those things. But the primary piece is we don't want class size to increase because we did cut the half team. And so we're being very, very cautious about that and other changes afoot. So that's that's sort of where we're sitting on the choice front. But I'm not saying I share or disagree or disagree with that philosophical bent, but it certainly has been expressed by school members in the past.
All right. Anyone else before we Jennifer?
I'm going back to the question of how do we know what the enrollment is going to be is going to be. And I'm pressing this point a little bit because it was a personal point of confusion for me. I have a seventh grader this year and in the summer in between sixth and seventh grade, I was like, am I supposed to enroll her in arms? How do they know if she's coming or not? So I called the middle school and I said, she was a student at Crocker Farm. Do I need to enroll her? And they said, no, no, just Crocker Farm will send us her info. Don't worry about it. And I thought, well, what if I were going to pull her, which I'm which I wasn't going to, but like how no one like there was, there seemed to be no venue for for families to let you know if we were not going to send our kids to seventh grade. But but they told me she was fine. So that worked out well. But then I I heard a report from my seventh grader that like in the first week of school this school year, there were a few times when there were two students that kept getting called at attendance. And the kids were like, they moved to Florida. So it seemed like this, we didn't know if they were coming or not until they showed up or not. I just I'm just pushing a little bit to like, actually, how do we know who's going to who's who's going to enroll?
All right. One of the challenges we had this year is we had a transition, and this isn't a critique of the individual, but we have a secondary registrar who typically does that role. Our long time registrar left the district in the end of June. The hiring process for the new registrar took a little longer than we were thinking. So there was a gap that's not typically there in the summer where there was no we're covering, but there was no person who was sort of owning that process. Typically, there's the person's based at the high school, but they actually are the registrar for all students at the secondary level and they manage a lot of that. In the absence of someone managing that role, we had some gaps this summer. So I think what you're noticing is absolutely what happened. But now that we have someone in place, we don't anticipate that being a challenge in the future.
All right. Anyone else? And then we will move on to the budget presentation with Doug Slaughter.
Yep. And I'm just going to queue it up for Doug. Doug, if you want to get the screen going while I just do a quick introduction. Doug, if you want to get the screen going while I, um, just do a quick introduction. So this is the initial budget presentation, just to set the stage. This is going to show, uh, what a level services budget would look like. And one of the goals for tonight is certainly for anyone to ask any questions. Our line item budget is on the website for anyone in the public or as well as the committee. But we have a four town meeting on the 10th. And one of the pieces that I'm going to be harping on and jumping in after Doug presents his budget is, uh, I have some ideas I want to share about an approach, um, to take, to prepare for that four town meeting, which is the next time we'll be talking about budget. Because we, you know, I think Doug shows a number of scenarios. I'm going to, uh, insert myself a bit, uh, because I do think I want to, you know, get to a place where our next four town meetings, our last four town meeting of the year. We really do need to get to consensus pretty, pretty quickly with the communities on the assessment method. So Doug's done a tremendous amount of work to organize, um, this budget. I know there was some questions last year, it was such a crazy year, we didn't have, uh, all the documents in place in our long, long book. And, and thank you Doug for putting all of those together again, because it's like three budgets simultaneously is, is makes for, um, a very, a challenge, not just for Doug, but his whole department. I want to just note that if he, if I didn't, he would, he would rightfully correct me. But really the focus tonight is understanding what's in the budget, uh, understanding some of the drivers of changes, um, from last year to this year. And then at the end, so I'll, Doug's going to do that. He's dramatically more knowledgeable than I am on that, but I am going to jump back in because I do want to really think through a strategy for four town meeting. Cause we, what we'd like to do is to leave tonight with some feedback from the committee and then to develop a more of a proposal for the four town meeting, uh, for folks to look at a week from Thursday. With that, I think, oh, the last thing I want to say is this is really, and I said this at the, uh, uh, an Amherst community meeting, uh, or town meeting, which was the, the budget coordinating group that we're trying to bridge. We, we know we have, um, challenges in terms of sustainability. We know sixth grade is coming to the middle school, uh, a year from now and from the Amherst schools. We know there's going to be some financial benefit to the region, uh, and we know we're going to have declining enrollment over the next few years. If you look at our, in all of our towns, if you look at the, the primary grades up through third grade, maybe even fourth grade to a certain extent, we see lower enrollment. So we know that there's some natural opportunities for us to kind of right-size, uh, some of our models in the future, but we have to get there. And so really we're looking at this, it's not just how do we get to next year, but how do we look at the next couple of years and bridge to a place where we feel like, uh, financially, we'll be able to take steps to be, uh, consistent with, I think, the four towns feedback, uh, around sustainability. So Doug, with that more long-winded than I anticipated introduction, uh, and I've been waiting, uh, this meeting a while, so I'll turn it over to you. Would you like me to do the slides or would you like to do them?
Um, I'm fine to do them, I just can't at present.
Oh, I didn't turn that back on, I apologize. You should be able to now, my, uh, my apologies, Doug.
That's quite right. Make that slide a little thicker. So I'll, I'll, um, begin tonight by starting with, with, uh, with where are we in the process? The thing that, that we, uh, that I want to share a little bit is, is, you know, it's a fairly lengthy process that we go through as far as preparing our budget and, and, uh, and, uh, getting it ready for, for the votes, uh, the formal votes on, on approval. Uh, and so, you know, uh, on this budget process slide, we're sitting kind of in the middle. We're really right in this, this third bullet point right here where we're talking about, uh, projections of revenues and expenses, uh, as refined as we can. Uh, at this point in time, we've gotten some information literally in the last week and, and matter of fact, in the last day or so that I'll share with you a little bit as, as we go through this. But we really start in October, November, we get guidance from our, our communities in, in November and December a little bit and, and more as we go along about what they can afford, what fits within their overall financial pictures and, and what they can and can't, uh, afford to do and, and what they are, uh, uh, willing to support or able to support really is more often the question, I think. I think they, they'd love to support more, but there are limitations on what, uh, what they can do as far as the revenues they have available to, to, uh, to appropriate to us. Uh, so we're, we're in the, uh, in the middle of that process right now, uh, just to lay out what's coming up next. You know, next time we'll have a, you know, uh, 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 some more detail for you as far as, uh, specifics on meeting the, uh, you know, the revenues that are available to us. And, and I think that, uh, to, to the point that Mike made, we really need to get some, uh, consensus around our assessment method. Cause that will set the frame of more concretely of, of what our revenues are, are likely to be. We also need to go through the process with the assessment method of getting approval by the state as well as then making that available to, uh, to our four towns for their approval and in their, in their budget process. So it's a, a few pieces that have to get taken care of and the sooner we can nail down the specifics, the better off, uh, as we go forward. But we'll get into more details on what kinds of, uh, adds or cuts or adjustments we're going to make to our budget in, in our, our next, uh, next meetings. And then we will definitely have to vote this, uh, at the meeting of the 15th of March. That meets the deadlines for, uh, the, the town meetings and the warrants that they have to put together for notice to the, to the public relative to their, to their town meeting and, and the, uh, articles that they're going to take up relative to the, to the budget. So that lays out sort of where we are and where we're going in the next few weeks. So in, you know, over the next few weeks, uh, we'll, we'll get the picture much more clearly identified. Hopefully there'll be, uh, no extreme changes from the state. We've got the governor's budget. And so, uh, I'll move to the next slide here and, and sort of layout what's changed since the last time I presented something to you. So back in early January, uh, I gave you, uh, a sort of first look at, at the budget with estimates on, on a variety of, of, uh, aspects of the, of the budget. Not a tremendous amount has changed. You know, we, a couple of bits of good news, however, um, in that, uh, our expenses overall have gone down about $27,000. Most of that's related to a refinement in our, uh, assessment, uh, retirement assessment. So our employees that work, uh, that aren't, uh, in the teacher retirement system, uh, pay into the Hampshire County retirement system. We get a number, uh, of what that assessment is, in other words, what our obligation is to pay for their retirements and, and, uh, we got a refined number in, uh, in January and so that included that, that's most of that 27,000. There's some other minor adjustments to, uh, other aspects of the budget as we continue to go through that, that contributes to that as well. Um, on the revenue side, we, uh, very conservatively estimated the, uh, chapter 78, uh, with the governor's budget coming out. It, it, you know, the, uh, the sort of hold harmless aspect has been preserved. And so for us, uh, what that translates into is that, uh, the aid that we got this year, uh, will be can, you know, will be added to with a $30 per student. A, a addition, that's, uh, a little over $39,000 that adds to our, our incoming revenue. So that's, uh, both of those are, are positive aspects. They reduce our, our, uh, our need for assessment to, to the member towns by about $66,000. So that, that helps our overall budget picture as we move ahead. That last bullet, which was true when I put it together, uh, a few days ago, is not true any longer. We did get our information on health insurance. Uh, unfortunately, our estimate was 4% and that's basically where it came in. You know, the difference between what the actual number was and, and ours is, is not, uh, you know, really, uh, appreciable enough to, to merit changing in our, in our budget at this point. We were hopeful it was going to be less, uh, you know, health insurance is a very large, uh, driver in our budget and it's a very big expense for us as part of the compensation package for, for our, our employees. But it is, uh, it is holding steady at the estimate that we had put in place, uh, you know, earlier in the, in the year. And so, um, again, while we were hopeful it might come in a little bit lower than that, it did not. And so, uh, that estimate is, is now, uh, more firmly, uh, in place and, and accurate to, to what we, uh, thought was, was the case earlier in the year. So next, I'm going to make this just a little larger, just so we can see the numbers a little bit better. While this looks like almost exactly the same slide I shared with you in early January, it is actually slightly different. You know, those, those two combinations, this is the expense side. So what you're going to see here is that reduction of about $27,000 is actually showing up in this column, uh, right here. Most of it sits in this, this, uh, risk and benefit line because that's, uh, where things like retirement and, and health insurance, uh, exist. But largely, just as a reminder, uh, we're going to use about 750, we're suggesting using about $750,000 of choice revenues. We've been conservative in our use over the last couple of years. So our, uh, the balance in our reserve account for that, or for our revolving account, excuse me, in that is, has grown a little bit. And so we have the opportunity this year to support our budget in a little stronger way. We'll continue to support the, you know, funding of our OPEB obligation, which is our, our, uh, our trust fund that we have set up for the purpose of, of, uh, ultimately, uh, paying for health insurance for our retirees through that, uh, uh, that trust. Excuse me. At present, we use what's called a pay-as-you-go system, which means in that risk and benefit line is all our active employees as well as all our retirees. And so as health insurance costs rise, we're, we're covering all of that cost simultaneously, uh, within the active budget. At some point, you know, in many, many years in the future, but nonetheless, we're still making progress in that regard. The OPEB will help, uh, relieve that burden a little bit for us. As noted in our last meeting, you know, the, the increases in, in risk and benefits besides health insurance is, is, uh, you know, other insurances are higher. Property insurance is, is significantly higher. It's not a big number, but you know, uh, when, when things go up, uh, in, in an area like that, it's still noticeable. Um, and also as, as we went through the budget, budgeting, you know, setting the frame of this, uh, and projecting out for this year. You know, we, you know, we made some adjustment to, to various budget lines, but in particular, one that increased noticeably was the, uh, was in central administration. And, and that was driven by legal expenses. And some of those are just the nature of, of the work that we're doing and some of the negotiations that we're going through. And some of that's just the nature of, of, uh, our history with, with regard to legal expenses for the district. I think every, every district is experiencing, experiencing this to some extent. What we're doing here is, is adjusting our budget to reflect, uh, what our past history is and, and have a true number for the coming year. Likewise, going through the other parts of the budget, we, you know, areas that are either up or down, small amounts usually in, in our other expenses, we've, we've taken that into consideration as well. Uh, under information systems, the $50,000, it was a, it was a reduction we made last year. We, uh, buy a fair amount of our technology for the kids, uh, you know, Chromebooks, that sort of stuff through, through a capital account that we, we set up in, in our operating fund. And we usually fund that at a particular level, we reduced that by about $50,000 last year because we had, uh, in the beginning of the pandemic, spent a fair amount of money on, on technology to go into remote circumstance. So we were able to, to conserve, uh, some resources last year. And so this year we need to put that back in place. And I'm trying to think if there's any other news and notes that I haven't shared with you in the past relative to this budget. I think in the transport, if I'm reading correctly, the transportation line, uh, you know, we have a, as a part of our contract, um, is in, is a, an adjustment based on the, uh, consumer price index for the Northeast. And so that consumer price index for the last, uh, calendar year, uh, which just ended last December and the numbers just came out, uh, the final numbers for the final month of the, of the year came out just a few, few days ago. Caused an increase in our overall transportation, uh, of about four and a half percent. And so that's part of the impact on transportation that we see there is that, that overall inflationary factor. There are other, because it's a shared system with Amherst and Pelham and Leverett Elementary and Schuylkill Elementary, all, all of those districts are involved in that. You know, who the riders are and how many miles that we transport those riders, uh, also influences, uh, you know, how that, how that overall cost is, is distributed. So, uh, it's, it's not a direct four and a half percent just for that. It's, it depends on how many, uh, how many riders and how many miles we're traveling with those riders, uh, that, that influenced that number. But, but nonetheless, it's, it's, um, it's much more well-known now that the final, uh, sort of CPI for the year has come in. So at this point, I'll, uh, why don't I pause at this point to see if there are any other questions relative to the expense side of the budget? And we'll talk about revenue because I think that's going to be a, a, a richer conversation relative to, in preparation for the conversation next week at the four towns. So why don't I pause here for just a moment and see if anyone has questions about what, what's presented here? Jennifer?
Sorry Doug, if you said this already, remind me again, where is the 750,000 in choice applied?
So the way in which we, uh, we traditionally do that is we apply that in, uh, the salary lines of the middle school and high school mathematics department. Uh, it's a longstanding tradition for us to use mathematics. It, it really could be applied in, in pretty much any area. I think the, the thinking is, is generally every student takes math, uh, and so that's a department that, that we could, uh, uh, apply those school choice funds fairly, fairly simply and, and have it discount, uh, the cost of our, our salaries. So that, you know, if, if we were not to use any school choice, the salary line at the very top would be $750,000 higher than what it's showing right there. And that's also one of the things when you look at, uh, if, if you're looking at the larger budget book that you got as part of the packet that's, and you go to those sections, uh, and you're looking at sort of the overall dollar for salaries and you look at math and you're like, well, wait a minute, this has got the same number of people as like English or science. Why is it so much less? Well, that's why, but that's also why you, you also see in this sort of graphical that shows the history of a bit of volatility, because it depends on how much, uh, you know, school choice we use in any given year, how much it sort of discounts or not. And then coupled with that is the usual sort of things that happen to any of those department budgets, which is, you know, new staff come in, other staff leave, those kinds of changes. So it, it is, uh, you know, a little tricky to track. I've, I've debated about ways to sort of more explicitly try to show that. I tried to put explicit language in that sort of, uh, next to the graph that's in the, in the bigger budget book that explains, uh, that we use the school choice money in that way. And like I said, if you look at that and you look at that chart, you'll notice the last two years, the increase in the math department salary expense. It's not because we had this huge turnover in staff and what they cost, it's really that we applied less school choice than we, than, than we, uh, you know, needed to. We were in a fortunate circumstance, we could reduce that, build up our balance a little bit. Uh, and so you'll see a little drop off this year because of, of that larger amount of, of choice money.
So on this page, that 17.1 million is actually like 17.9, if you add it in the, the 750,000?
That's correct.
And, and in the fiscal 22 budget, that 16.9 also would be higher if you added in the school choice, the choice, but it was a different amount.
Right, so in, in, in fiscal 22, the current year, um, see if I can recall what the, what the number was. I think this, the choice money was, uh, I'm drawing a blank, it's either 500,000 or either four or 500,000. So it's a little more modest number. If you go back to, to 20, the actual amount, uh, we ended up using, we may have had budgeted 700,000 or something like that. We only used again like 400,000. So, so, you know, as we go through the, the actual, as we complete the year, we'll, we'll often, uh, adjust our use of school choice. If, if, you know, resources are turning out to be favorable for us, we'll, we'll preserve that school choice for another year. So we, and we've done that in the last couple of years where our balance is a little higher at the moment, which is why we can afford to, to take a bigger, a bigger bite this year out of that, out of that revolving fund.
Okay. And speaking of the 174-page budget book, it's on Portox. In the before times, did we get that in a hard copy? Like I, I need to see numbers on paper. Like, is there any way to get a hard copy of that printed?
Absolutely. So if you'd like, if you'd like one, and this would be, I'll say this to any of the members, you know, we can, we can get a copy printed up and bound up for you if you'd like. So if you would, I'll, I'll make a note to, to print one up for you.
Thank you, I'll contact you offline, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Doug? Allison?
I apologize if you, if you explained this already in detail, um, but in the, uh, control accounts, can you describe what's, what's assumed in there? And, um, and how that might be adjusted over time or what might be adjusted over time?
So one of the biggest reasons it's, uh, of the size that it is, is that, uh, we're in, uh, negotiations currently with our, with, uh, with our unions relative to the, to the coming year. And so, you know, in lieu of a fixed contract where we can be much more predictive about, uh, you know, what the cost of all our employees is going to be. We make estimates about what might be the result of our, our, uh, uh, negotiations. So that's held in the control accounts. There are other things, uh, some other estimates, some other, um, you know, uh, monies that we reserve for use in, 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 uh, contingency sorts of ways, uh, that we put in, and include in that, in, in that set of accounts that we, we have there. I'm being a little less direct around the, the sort of negotiation piece intentionally, because it is a, it is a, uh, you know, the, to discuss it in public would be unfair labor, not unfair labor, but, uh, I'm drawing a blank on the term, but it, it, you know, it, it doesn't allow for an appropriate, uh, and, and honest conversation with our, with our, uh, with our partners that we're trying to negotiate with. And so, uh, you know, we, we have to by virtue of the nature of the budget cycle and the, and the limitations of what funding the, the towns have, uh, we have to make some estimates for what that, what that number is like. we have to make some estimates for what that, what that number is like. And what we think fits in and doesn't, you know, and still preserves the sort of other aspects of the budget that we know are, are more concrete and fixed in nature. You know, we know we're going to have heating bills. We know we're going to have busting transportation costs that, that we can predict in, in, in a more refined way. But, but nonetheless, we make some estimates about what we think is likely to be the outcome of those, of those negotiations. And, and we have that included in there, in those control accounts. When we actually, you know, get to a place of, of resolution and agreement on a, on a contract, then we will distribute those, those funds into those accounts that apply. And so most of those will end up up into the salary and contracts and, and those lines. So we, we do, you know, have to make some sort of estimate and use our crystal ball a little bit to try to figure out how best to estimate that. And, and, and it's, it's a two-fold process in some respects. It's, you know, what do we think we can afford and, and still meet the obligations that are in those other lines that exist? And then also, you know, what do we think is the right, the right direction to go as far as commitment to our employees? Peter?
I'll move to extend our meeting by 30 minutes.
Second.
A little quick roll call vote here. Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Sarah Buss?
Sarah Buss, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Peter?
Peter, I.
Stephen?
Stephen, I.
And Allison?
Allison, I.
And me, Ben, I. Are there, were there any more questions? All right. There we go. Margaret?
So Doug, I just want to make sure I understand. So what's in the control account right now is what you anticipate to be the increase that would be added to the projected salary line for next year?
I would suggest that it's part of the increase. So in, in projecting forward, you know, we look at our employees and we essentially take a snapshot of our employees. Factor in, you know, the current contract, the steps that are involved. So, you know, some of that's in and included in the estimates we have in the upper part of the, of that. But that also includes things like expectations of retirements and their replacements and what they cost or you know, any of those types of, of turnover type changes are trying to be captured as well. We'll do more of that because it's evolving all the time. As a matter of fact, you know, I was thinking about this today a little bit, you know, who is in the employee of the district changes almost every single day? And that's, and that's not, I don't mean, I don't say it to be facetious, it's just the nature of, and especially so in, in the pandemic. You know, the need to hire people or the, or people making choices about their, their careers that, that caused them to leave or change jobs is, is continuously sort of changing the, the dynamic of who's employed with us. So that, so we take our best shot, you know, snapshot of who we've got and what those costs are going to be. We, we factor that into those salary lines, but we also down in that control account have some expectation about what, what will happen in our negotiations and, and what that's going to cost us. And so some, some increases are kind of in both places.
Okay. Thank you.
And any more questions? Okay. Then I'll move on to the sort of revenue picture, which we have to zoom out just a touch to see that a little bit. Okay. So what I'm showing here is it's a slide you've seen before. So just to orient you a little bit to this, these first two columns in white here on the left-hand side are two years ago in the current year. What we're showing in the various colors are different assessment methods. Starting from the top, we're taking what we think is our overall budget based on that projection. We were just looking on the other slide. That number has, like I said before, gone down by about $66,000. We then take out in the, in the middle section, we're, we're utilizing what are the other revenue sources that we have? So chapter 70, that's an updated number from before. That's about $39,000 larger than the last time you saw this chart. The remaining estimates of transportation reimbursement, Medicaid reimbursement, charter reimbursement, interest revenue and our E and D support are, are all the same as before. Again, by virtue of being fairly conservative and, and I think having some savings, you know, with, with last year being mostly remote, there were some expenses we just didn't have. You know, we, we didn't run as much heat in the building because there weren't people in the building. Because we didn't come into school a regular way and in a large scale way until, you know, May. And so, you know, that afforded us the ability to kind of build up our reserves, which is what our E and D is. It's the, the, you know, the leftover from, from our budgets that we kind of accumulate over time. There are some limits on that. And so we are able to use it to support our budget in a subsequent year. And so we're going to use a pretty good sized number of $700,000 for the coming year. But again, that hasn't changed from, from what I showed you in, in early January. And then that last little section down at the bottom is where each of the towns and the assessments based on the different methodologies. And so we have been using in the current year, we're using a 65% five-year rolling average of the statutory method. And all, you know, the statutory method, which is, is a, is based on an annual minimum local contribution to each community. Is, is the method, the state, I don't want to say dictates, but expresses as their preferred way of doing it and, 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 you know, the obligations that each town should carry relative to their, their income in their community as well as their taxable property. What we have done over the last several years is take those minimum local contributions over five years preceding the current year, averaging them. And then taking instead of the entirety of that, we've taken a portion of that to apply that to our assessment. And then what's remaining to that, remaining of the assessment, using what's called our regional agreement method, which is involving a five-year rolling average of the students that we have. And so each of those different colors represents a slightly different percentage of, of, of that five-year rolling average of minimal local contributions. And, and the impact on, on the, on the assessments to each of the communities and the percentage change from, from, from the current year. And so what you see is that, you know, the, you know, certain communities like Pelham is going to take a, a pretty tough hit this year. And you kind of regardless of which method we use, it's a, it's a pretty big jump. If we were to fund the, the budget as it, as it is now, you know, by virtue of the changes in, in, you know, demographics of number of students, as well as, you know, the different assessment methods. Schutzeberry has, has a reduction in their, in their assessment relative to previous year. And Emerson Leverett kind of sit in between those two. Amherst is giving guidance to us that the amount that they can, that they can increase their assessment is about two and a half percent. And while not shown on this slide, because it gets complicated depending on which one you want to display. I can give you a range and I, in the larger budget book, it is there. If, if we were to try to meet two and a half percent, the range of, of reductions, and I say that in, in a broad sense, because that could be any kind of reduction, not just a cut. It can be an adjustment, you know, an expense that comes in lower, a revenue that, that is higher than anticipated or, or what have you. An overall reduction of the assessment by about 140 to $220,000 will, will put Amherst at two and a half percent kind of across the board. And so there, there are going to be options for us to discuss in, in earnest at, at our, our four towns meeting, our four towns meeting relative to, to what that, what that looks like and, and what assessment method kind of fits in with, you know, the comfort or discomfort level of each community relative to what a change of, of the magnitude of, you know, 140 to $220,000 looks like. I will say, and, and, you know, that, you know, one option we have that we have to consider, you know, is, is, is some, some COVID related grant monies that are available to us. And, you know, the, the concern with using something like that, which is one-time money is that it, it will, you know, and can, you know, fill in a gap in a current year, but it, but it doesn't solve the overall and underlying structural problem that, that, that we have. And so nonetheless, you know, it is a resource we can tap into. So when I, like I said, when I talk about, you know, sort of 140 to 220 in the range of, you know, roughly in that range of, of reduction in assessment, and I use that term intentionally because it doesn't necessarily mean a cut. It could, and that may be a choice we make. It may be adjustments that we make. It may be efficiencies that we can, that we can identify that reduce our overall expense, which then ultimately reduces the amount to be assessed. You know, that, that reduction of that amount would get us to those targets that, that the communities can, can potentially afford. And so I think I'll stop there and, you know, see if there's any questions about that. See if the superintendent wanted to offer any other comment relative to, to the, these assessments. So.
Go ahead.
Did you say, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Is it okay to jump in or was someone else's hand up first?
No, no. Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, this is where I think, I think Doug did a really nice job explaining things and, and this is the first run at the budget. And what I think we'd like to try to do is that, you know, we heard conflicting feedback at the first four town meeting. You were there, I know many of the folks who weren't have watched it since. Both about assessment method, strategy approach. And so you know, what, what I'd like to have some feedback is we, we want to have a method that sustains. You know, and so I think there may be an opportunity, as Doug mentioned, to sort of get to a method that may be sustainable for the future, using some, some of the grant funds to get there. Because one of the challenges we have year in, year out is not just how much, how big the budget is, but it's the relative percentages. And because every year I've been in this role, we've never had two years in a row where we've had the same methodology. So we have statutory method numbers that change every year. We have a different assessment method every year and we have a different budget every year. And, and so those three variables are a real challenge. So if we do have some, some other funds that we could use to minimize the blow, I think getting to a sustainable method is going to benefit not just the district, but also for the towns. Because that, the smoothing out factor gets a lot better if you're using the same method every year. When you're changing the method every year, it's really hard to smooth, no matter how much smoothing you, you have. I think the second point I wanted to, I'm getting really specific in my questions, but I think it's just at that point. So if I'm ahead of myself, the chair or the committee can tell me to slow down. But the second point is some of these numbers are really high and they're high, you know, up and down. One of the concepts that was explored in one of the many studies that was completed about the regional budget was can we include additional guardrails for smoothing? In other words, saying no town goes up over X percent and no town goes down over, you know, under, you know, X percent. So that it sort of levels some of the impact. It's something that was a lot of broad support for, except we never could actualize the other part of the assessment method in the past, right? Everybody kind of like, kind of thought, at least in theory, that that was sound, particularly as it relates to the three smaller towns. Right? It's unlikely that Amherst is going to need to go up over 4% or 5%. We're going to, you know, that just mathematically, it's unlikely. But you see some really big swings here, particularly for Pelham in one direction and potentially particularly for Schutzeberry. Because if, if, you know, we make those reductions in assessment amounts, some of that, those minus five minus, it might be minus six or minus eight or minus 10. And, you know, that doesn't serve the district's interests well either. So sort of the two things that I guess I wanted to get feedback on are, are folks comfortable, and just to be totally transparent, thinking about the modified statutory method, which I think there, there is some support for in, in at least many of the communities. And really trying to explore how to put guardrails on so no town, you know, exceeds a percentage that you know, we at least put out as a draft that seems unreasonably high and no town goes down unreasonably significant amount in, in an offense. So I guess, you know, the, the effort is can we get to a, a methodology and smooth out so that we have a consistent methodology moving forward? And can we put in additional smoothing mechanism that doesn't allow for wild swings, particularly for the small communities who EQV can go up and down, the enrollment, some minor relatively unreal numbers, minor shifts in enrollment can really trip numbers. So I guess the, the feedback we're looking for is, is, is the committee, we're not ready to do that now. We don't have it all mapped out. But I, as a strategy perspective, my experience is if we go in with, here's what we're thinking. You know, we being, you know, Doug and myself, we certainly don't have another meeting between now and the 10th and gather feedback, we could certainly have a meeting between now and then, just so the school committee can preview that. We can, we can figure that out if the committee wants. But I, what I don't think will be successful is putting this very lovely pastel colored chart out and asking for more general feedback in the month of February. I do think we just need to move. And I think, you know, some grant funds allow us maybe more flexibility to move in a way that might garner, knock on wood, some, some broader support. Sorry, that was long-winded tonight. I'm not helping with the time of the meeting. I apologize. But, you know, I guess I'm looking for school committee to say, yeah, you know, have at it. And, you know, not that school committee will vote on it beforehand, but just structurally, I think going in with a proposal to the four town meeting versus a open book might, might be a more successful strategy.
Peter, go ahead.
Okay. So that's interesting, creative. Need to have some time to dig, digest that, but I, I, you know, strategically, philosophically, and in thinking in terms of the best interest of the region and, and our member towns. I think it makes a lot of sense to try and drive towards a final resolution on the assessment method. I think, unless you are a true grizzled veteran of the decades plus long arduous hundreds of hours battle to try and arrive at a consensus, it's, it's really hard to overstate. Not just how intractable this problem has been, but, but how much harm it's caused to one, financial planning for our member towns, you know, the unpredictability year over year is, is significant. It's, and, and that unpredictability is also harmful to, to our planning and makes, makes our jobs harder. It takes a whole lot of time to try and arrive at something where we avoid a crisis every single year. You know, time that frankly, I would rather our superintendent and finance director not have to be bothered with. So you can do your other superintendent, finance director things as, as well as the other, you know, members of the select boards and finance committees of our member towns. And, you know, and I also think more broadly, having this crisis every year among our member towns starts to become a bit of an existential crisis for the region. I don't, I, I think there's a lot of practical roadblocks that, that ever coming to fruition. But it, it certainly strains the relationship. And, and if, if I go back, you know, five years and compare the tone of collaboration and, and the eagerness to, or enthusiasm to our work and puts more effort into a consensus. I, I would say that it's gone down in the last several years. And, and the, the divide between the member towns about which precise method they would like has, has, has only stayed apart. So I, I think the, while, while I like the idea typically of focusing on an assessment method that is practical just for this year, like, let's just get through this year and do the, the compromise we think will pass. I think, I think working for an end game makes a lot of sense. And my first, my first take is that it's hard to see anything other than of some version of full statutory being that end game. Now, obviously the political problem is that Amherst will not like that based on their previous comments. And they, they also, I'm just looking down here at the line item to make sure I'm saying this correctly. They'll, you know, they, they would pay more based on this column. And so I, I'm, I'm open to that idea of using these one-time funds to ease, ease that transition, you know, and, and just sort of rip the Band-Aid off and get to the end of the column. But there is that, that principle of objection or concern that we've always raised with using one-time funds for revolving issues, right? It's like, that's good for this year, but what happens next year when we don't have that, that money? So, and I, I know Dr. Morris, you talked at the top about, you know, you're trying to bridge, you know, this year, next year to a, a more cost efficient, steady state where our, maybe our enrollment is a little less. We're, we're getting a little bit of funding from the sixth grade move. But I, I guess I would want to see that logic sort of tied out. But I, I guess I would want to see that logic sort of tied out a little more clearly in terms, you know, so that we can feel comfortable saying, we, we think it's a fiscally prudent thing to, to leverage these one-time monies to, to achieve that end. Because it is a very valuable end, and we haven't talked about a practical way to get there in a long time.
Allison.
Yeah, I'm inclined to, to agree or support that concept. Because I think, I mean, you mentioned it, Mike, when you were describing sort of the, one of the impacts of changing up our assessment method every single year, is that what we're looking at is, in terms of any individual town, look, is looking at it their increase or in some cases decrease, it has less to do, a, a lot of times, with actual facts and more with sort of what is the difference in the assessment method, right? So the drivers of change year over year have as much to do with, who is the loudest in the, in the regional, in the four towns meeting? Or, or was more persuasive in that argument as opposed to what are the real drivers of, of our budget? And so, you know, building on what Peter was saying is, we're spending a, a lot of time and a lot of energy and frankly, relationship deterioration, talking about things that actually aren't related to our school's budget, but really about sort of who's, who's paying. And I think a lot of the swings, some of the complaints or concerns that we've heard in past four towns meetings about one town, quote unquote, this is not my word, subsidizing another town has more to do with the assessment method changes than anything really related to a single assessment, you know, what's happening with the budget or with school populations. So I, 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 I would support that notion of just trying to go to, straight to the modified statutory method and, and sort of looking at that as, you know, as a, as our sort of permanent solution. And then in thinking about sort of the Amherst concerns, you know, under this, the scenario that we're looking at right now, and I understand Doug, that you said that there's a way that we could get to potentially 2.5% for any of these others. But regardless, the difference between the modified statutory and where we were, I think we were at 65% this year.
Yes.
Is, is, is small compared to what we know that Amherst is going to want, which is the regional agreement method, right? Like that, that, you know, but we know that we're not going to get agreement across four towns on, on that method. So at, at that point, it's, I, I feel like we're not going to make, we, we won't make them happy about a lot of things, you know, any one of these choices. So let's, let's think and, and sort of wear our hats for what might be most beneficial for a long-term strategy for, for the district.
Margaret.
Okay, so speaking as a representative from Pelham, who's looking at significant increases in a very small town, how, you talked about putting rails on this. Can you give me an example of how you might do that? If we were looking at this modified statutory method where Pelham would have a 6.24% increase, what do you mean when you say we could put rails on this?
Sure, so.
Give me numbers somehow?
Yeah, so I can talk about what was talked about in prior studies, right? I'm not going to profit an opinion tonight. But I think when I remember having tangentially and more centrally involved in two different studies that have occurred, we're setting a number. Sometimes it was 4%, sometimes it was 5%. And it, it was a maximum percentage increase that any town would have their assessment go up and, or down. And if it was like, you know, a situation where Pelham went up and no one went down, that, the, the difference would be absorbed in a representative way by the other communities. So for instance, in a scenario, I'm going to use 5% just because, the sake of this argument. So if we look at the modified statutory method on this chart, again, this is not necessarily the chart that's going to hold, but on this chart, you'd see that Pelham is over 5%. So it would max out at 5%. And so that is probably about, I'm guessing, a $10,000 difference for the town of Pelham. Similarly, Schutzbury, or, or not similarly, but in, in sort of conversely, Schutzbury is a bit under 5%. So they would max out at 5% reduction in their assessment. In this happy scenario, it looks like it, they sort of, it washes themselves out, and it's not always such a happy story, where sort of one's high and one's low. But the idea is that it would maximize the percent increase that any member town would, would, would have to pay. That all everyone agrees to, it's how do you make up the funds that's the challenge, right? So, you know, as a relative percentage, Amherst is 80% of the budget. If you include Pelham, you take them out of it, you know, $8,000 for, for Amherst doesn't shift their percentage all that much, right? So the impact, distributed impact is not that great on the other communities. The logistics of how that would work out would need to be certainly talked about with member towns. And I don't think we'll have that resolved by next week, but I just want to reintroduce, I'm interested in reintroducing the concept, because I think long-term, if our goal is sustainable budgets, it's going to involve some smoothing factors. One is having a method that has a five-year average rolled into it, which this one does. Another is having the same method every year, that smooth things out. And another could be that, you know, these, these increases that sometimes happen with relatively in real numbers, small enrollment shifts, if they can be managed by putting rails on, you know, increases and decreases, I think it's a benefit for the district as well as the member towns to know, I'm never going to have a 9% increase, because I've got this one grade level that's going to, you know, at Pelham, this, Pelham's the smallest one, right? It's the most likely to happen. You have a grade level that you have very few choose school choice kids go from elementary to region. All of a sudden, your percent of the enrollment goes up a lot. It might be a difference of five kids, but the relative difference actually shifts it so that it could have an unusually large impact. And it sort of smooths that out and distributes that across the member towns so that no one town is, you know, all towns are capped up and down in a way that hopefully is a smoothing factor as well. Yeah, the danger is some people like want it to be like 3%, but like, we can't, you know, at some point, y- your method doesn't mean anything when the number gets too low. But, you know, having been part of those conversations four, five years ago, lots of people liked it, but it was everything else about the assessment method that we couldn't solve. So it sort of got dropped, and I think reintroducing that, not just for Pelham's sake, but for the, for all the towns' sake, I think could, to me, it feels like it would be something that would be positively received as trying to smooth things out. So in any given year, you might pay more than you'd like, but because of how the assessments go, but there's a cap to it that people can know is reliable. And I think that's, that's the piece that I think the benefit of, of, of at least starting that conversation. I don't know if we'll get there this year, but I, I think for the towns, what I continue to hear is predictability, reliability, certainly sustainability, but the predictability and reliability is really important. Statutory does change, but four fifths of it don't change every year. So you're talking about more predictability than perhaps we've had, and adding more things that are predictable and reliable, I think hopefully will help towns recognize that we're, we're trying to work with them on a solution that's going to be perhaps more sustainable than our current path. Sorry, really doing terrible job of not giving short answers, but this is complicated stuff and it's important.
Yeah, that, that is somewhat helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so I mean, so just picking up on that point a, a little bit with, with the rails. I, I think, I think it's important to, to, to communicate that pretty strongly if you're going to show this chart. Because, because, so I'm glad our members from Pelham spoke up, because that's the first thing that jumped out to me when I'm looking at the modified statutory method is, is the increase to Pelham. And so, I mean, it's, it's a good example if, if we're going to, if, if that's the column that, that we, that we recommend to, to emphasize that, you know, this, this, this is an example of why we need those smoothing factors. It's also, by the way, why the modified is probably a better long-term. I mean, I guess, it's a new idea here, but it looks like it may be a better option than the pure statutory, because it has that five-year enrollment average. So you get, you get the more smoothing there, in addition to whatever plus-minus guardrails you could put on, whether it's 4, 4.5 or 5%. The other thing I, I would say, unless you were saving this for another slide, Doug, is that, yeah, I mean, whatever reductions we can make for cost efficiencies, great, and hopefully the numbers get better. But I just want to say again, I'm, I'm not inclined to include service cuts in our budget this year, given the, you know, more than 2 million we've cut over the last four fiscal years. So I understand our member towns can only afford what they can afford. And, you know, so we're going to have to figure out how that all resolves. But I would be remiss if, if I saw a budget that said maybe 140, 220K of reductions and didn't mention that, so.
No, that's, that's definitely appreciated. I will offer one thing just about the statutory method. So if, if, if you're a real policy wonk and looked up what the chapter 70 numbers are like, and one of the pieces, when you, when you put in a regional school district, it tells you what those minimum local contributions are, those changed really dramatically this year. So that's the thing with the statutory method, is that minimum local contribution changes significantly year to year. And so it can be in, in a year-to-year, because it's a single-year number, can change really dramatically. And so, you know, for the same reasons we let, you know, we put in place a five-year rolling average on enrollment, we, using a five-year average on the, on that local contribution is also, I think, really a sensible piece. It may still result by virtue of the combination of enrollment changes and minimum local contribution changes and all that sorts of, it's only result in, in what we see like in Pelham's case of the 6% change. But I think, you know, having some, some, you know, bounding mechanism to, to moderate that on top of those other things that we're doing would be, would be best for everyone in the long term.
Do we have any more questions? Right, can move on here. All right, Margaret, go ahead.
So I know we're not talking about capital right now, but do we pass the capital budget separately from this budget? And, and again, I'm thinking about Pelham and some of the things I know that are happening are going to be happening in the town. So which, which would have perhaps affect passing a capital budget? Do we do these separately?
So I'll, I'll, I'll chime in on that. It, it is a distinct vote of the school committee. You will, you will take that vote at the same time as this one? So we'll, we'll have that all part of the same thing, because they'll need to go to town meeting in the same timeframe. So we'll, we'll, there was no change to what I presented to you the last time on that. And so it's, it's the same numbers at the moment. You know, I think the big chunk that's coming in, in regard to that are really two projects. One is the roof at the middle school that we've already, you've already given authorization for. That's likely to be another year or two away, so that will really sort of move down the line a little bit. It's not going to go away, but it's just going to be a little further away than, than it was presented before. And then, and then the, you know, the, the track and fields project is one that's, it's more immediate. And, and that one, again, I think, you know, we're, we're having ongoing conversations. You know, I proposed an idea, you know, relative to, to maybe having Amherst take a little more of the share of that. And, but it may be a circumstance where the, the, you know, the, the regional schools may have to sort of take ownership of the full responsibility, knowing that the other, you know, options or, or components may be in place. I'm going to have a conversation on, on Friday with the town of Amherst officials, and we'll, we'll kind of talk through some of those funding options, and hopefully we'll, we'll have a way to, to make that a little less uncomfortable for, for the, the capital assessments to, to the communities. But those, those, back to your original question, they're separate votes, they're at the same time. And we'll get you some more updated numbers on that fairly soon.
Right. Go ahead, Allison.
I move that we extend our meeting by 30 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Quick roll call vote. Stephen?
Stephen, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Sarah Bess?
Sarah Bess, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Jean?
I guess I'll abstain. I think I'll be leaving the meeting very soon.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
Peter?
Peter?
And me, Ben, aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven ayes and one abstain. And we will be moving on to pool testing and extracurricular activities. Someone from the policy subcommittee want to go ahead and pitch this one?
Yeah, I can summarize this. So y'all recall a couple of meetings ago? Here, let me just pull the document up. So the January 4th meeting, the regional school committee asked a policy subcommittee to research the general topic of pulled testament, testing mandates. We had a bit of a discussion, different opinions were expressed, but we said, sure, it's worth exploring. Pool testing mandate for extracurricular activities for students, including, are there any example policies? So we looked around, we didn't find a lot. We found two. There was one in Belch Town and one in, one in Natick we included there. So then, you know, we, we thought it would be most useful if we just shared some points that came up in a discussion about things to consider without, you know, offering an opinion one way or the other for the committee. We can certainly discuss our opinions here, the full committee. But in terms of the policy subcommittee, things to consider would be, what would the specific objective or goal be of, of requiring the pulled testing? Would it be reduced transmission? Would it be decreased infection, what, keeping students in school? What would that be? What conditions would activate or deactivate it? If you're going to pass a, a static policy like that, what, what would, when would you want to repeal it and, and why are you applying it now? The two districts that, that did have this policy don't have a student backs mandate like we do. So that's, that's a point of context. There was also, since our meeting, the new state program that Dr. Morris has mentioned, to provide free rapid tests that has had high opt-in response from our staff and students. And also Deb Westmoreland, as admin rep at the policy subcommittee, just mentioned that it's likely that would, to administer and ensure compliance that this program would probably require additional staffing and expenses, so. That is the summary report from the policy subcommittee. And anybody else in the policy subcommittee, feel free to jump in if I, I missed anything or anything else wasn't clear.
Open that up for discussion. Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, on the topic of, of what's, what's the goal or objective? I mean, you know, it maybe, maybe it seems obvious that the goal or objective would be to reduce transmission of COVID amongst students. But, but do we know that extracurriculars and sports is, is a high-risk activity or area where transmission occurs? Is it more risky than like eating lunch or, or not? Like, these are just some questions to ask. I mean, I, I, I was someone who was like in favor of considering this, but like, once I thought about more of the details and like, what would the goal be? Would this, would requiring this move us more towards that goal or not? Are extracurriculars any more risky than any of the other interactions that our students have every day? Those are some of the questions that came to mind.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think those are great questions, both the committee, you know, the subcommittee brought up and Jennifer, what she shared, I, you know, shares with the chair. We were checking in last week. This is not, I'll certainly, if it's what the committee wants to implement, we'll, we'll do it with fidelity. But it's in terms of our, where you put your eggs in the safety basket, this is not where I'm feeling urgency at the moment. So it's not that I think it's like a terrible idea or anything. It's just with, with, with our capacity and the direction we're going in. Yeah, I think there's other areas that I mentioned in superintendent update, and we'll continue to, that I'd like to focus more of our energy and attention on.
Allison, go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciated the questions that, that, that you all outlined from the subcommittee, because that, that is super helpful. And I would say, yeah, overall safety and health and sort of mitigating transmission as much as possible. And I feel like we have so many layers in, in place right now for specifically that purpose. And like my question, which kind of related to your question, Jennifer, which is not sure how much incremental benefit we're going to get in terms of even further mitigation of risk at this point. So and it's especially helpful to know the context that you all pointed out, that the school, the couple districts that do have this policy don't have some of the other safeguards in place that we have in place. And we do have, I think, last we heard, we do have high participation in our pooled testing as well. So, you know, we have multiple layers of testing with high participation rates, and I'm not sure that there's a benefit to, you know, the costs that you outlined or suggested there might be would be weighed, outweighed by the benefit and criminal benefit that we get from doing this. So my personal would be, let's not pursue this.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, so taking my policy subcommittee hat off and putting my personal opinion hat on. Yeah, I mean, I also don't feel like we need to do this at all right now. I mean, several concerns I have for it. Number one, it feels too far into the implementation details for me to be a policy. This is something that I would feel would be like a layered mitigation strategy that may or may not apply based on the changing conditions that the superintendent would evaluate and discuss with the public health director, right? That's the way that we've gone about most of our layered mitigation strategies for COVID health. And so this feels too, feels too static and too, you know, declarative. And, you know, like others have said, not really necessary, given the transmission, the non-existent in-school transmission that we've had. The other thing that made me feel uneasy about it is just like the negative impact it could potentially have on the student experience. You know, we've asked a lot of our students, like a real lot, in terms of COVID compliance over the last couple of years, and they've responded tremendously. But I think this came up either early this meeting or last meeting, that, you know, yes, kids are resilient, but they're not in, it's not like these things don't have an effect, right? And so we've had the vax mandate, we have the high-quality mask mandate. We had, you know, remote school for almost all of last year. And it's like, at what point do you then say we're doing so well? You can go to your sport or you can go to your play practice and not have to have yet another safety requirement. So it's certainly not something that, I'm not opposed to it being applied as called for, but doesn't feel like a necessary policy move at this time.
Yeah, I'm also inclined to agree, like, it kind of feels like, I don't know. There's a saying like, is the juice worth the squeeze? I don't feel like the juice is really worth the squeeze on this necessarily. I think we have enough safeguards in place. We have, pool testing is available to everyone and folks are actually participating. If we were in a different, for a different type of community, I think I'd probably feel slightly different. But yeah, I don't think this necessarily pushes me over the edge here. It does, anyone else who hasn't chimed in want to give your two cents here? Sarah Bass and then Margaret?
Yeah. I am not inclined to want to move forward with this at this time. I agree with what Peter said. I think it's getting a little overreaching as far as school committee versus implementation of things is concerned. And also, like, I think Allison pointed out, we have so many safeguards already in place and our participation in the pool testing and the new take-home, I don't know what it's called, the take-home test program. You know, I think Dr. Morris said at the beginning, it's like seventy-five percent and then of people are participating and then more people are continuing to sign up. That feels like really high numbers to me of not only people that are vaccinated, but also people that are participating in some sort of regular testing program. So I think this is a little much at this point in time.
And Margaret?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think this needs to be a policy. I would just add one thing, which is that unfortunately, not all of the communities with the schools that we compete against comply the way we do with things that are going on. So it isn't just because Amherst is very good about it. Our kids do get exposed to other people and other places who are not wearing masks and are not doing the things that we do. So I just have to add that in.
Fair enough. And Stephen, did you have anything to add? Good to go? All right, so without any comments left, we can move on to policy review. Back to the policy subcommittee team, Peter, you want to take that?
Yeah, so in the interest of time, I'll run through all these together and then, yeah, for intro. So the first two of these, CC administrative structure and CI filling administrative vacancies. So these are the first two that Deb hit for archive. So archive is to deactivate a policy, set it off to the side, we can find it and reinstitute it if we want, but it, you know, ceases to become an active policy. These are two that because of ed reform, the big shift in ninety-three in school committee and superintendent responsibility no longer apply. So this administrative structure is about how the administration should be structured and that we need to approve it, this superintendent needs to report on it to us. And then filling administrative vacancies spells out exactly, you know, how the applicant and process, hiring process should work for administrative vacancies. So that was voted by the policy subcommittee back in November, I think, November twenty-second. And I think Allison was on the chair at the time, so if there's any other questions on that, she could probably speak to that. And then the third one is something that Deb Westmoreland brought to us, a new policy for translations that essentially says the district will automatically, at a minimum, provide written translation of vital documents for each language. It constitutes at least five percent of the district's total multilingual student population, which is a long way to say our most common languages spoken that aren't English. And so that would, in our district, so that would be for our families. So it would be Spanish and Portuguese. And this was facilitated, as Deb was explaining to us, by a new online tool that makes the translations very easy to do, a lot easier to do than it used to be, and with very high accuracy, as she's confirmed with native speakers. So she thought this was, seemed pretty, really in line with our committee's values. And so this would be the, in terms of actions, this would function as the first reading for that new policy. And, you know, depending on how quickly we want to move on archiving the first two, we could either vote to archive one or both of them tonight, or we could defer action or stuff. Anything anybody else has to add from policy subcommittee, past or present?
What are folks thinking in terms of, are you guys up for voting on this tonight? Or is this something we should revisit? Allison?
I think per our policy on policy, we, since this is the first time that any of these three have been brought to the full committee, this is, as Peter said, is a first read. We would not vote on them until the second one. As a way to sort of enable, you know, maximum deliberation as well as public input, if there is any.
So we should probably talk about this in our next agenda item, if folks are ready to move on to that. Agenda planning, future agenda planning? Go ahead, Jennifer.
So, sorry, so we read the policies this meeting and then we'll vote on them on the next one?
Right.
But I actually have a question on that. I have, I think, on something I want to bring up about the translations policy.
Okay, go ahead.
So five percent of the district's total multilingual student population. So right now, the only two languages that meet that are Spanish and Portuguese. There's no other, those are the only two that constitute five percent or more. Am I hearing that correctly?
I guess that's just what Deb said. I might be misremembering though.
No, I was at the meeting too, and so I remember hearing you say that. I just at the time was surprised that Chinese wasn't one of them, but like, I actually don't really have a good sense of how many. I mean, if those two, if those are the only two that make up five percent of the multilingual population, then we must have a lot of languages spoken by the multilingual population, if those are the only two that hit five percent. So I'd want to ask about that. The other thing, I don't know how to, I don't necessarily know how to say this, and I don't want to say this in an insensitive way, but one of the things I learned while campaigning for school committee is that there are people who speak other languages, but actually don't read in those other languages. It might have been Khmer or Cambodian, I don't remember exactly what the language was, but I would want to make sure that like, we take, that we take that into consideration and that we're not translating written documents into a language that the speakers of that language don't actually read. You know what I mean? Like, so I think there's a difference between speaking a language and then reading in that language. So just something to consider. And I think that Deb had said that the multilingual parent advisory council, which I'm now a member of, but I haven't made it to a meeting of yet, were the ones that brought this idea. So I assume they know the population that we're dealing with, so that maybe there'll be a good place to go for input.
Allison?
One of the things that I learned as, when I was on policy committee, the number of requirements for reporting that we have in a lot of our policies. And I'm just wondering, building off of your questions, Jennifer, if there's something that we want to have sort of an annual report every spring about or every fall about sort of the languages and proportions of those that are spoken in our schools, just so that we're seeing where are we and which languages are we going to then be providing free of charge translations and interpretations for? It's just a suggestion for the policy subcommittee to explore, maybe.
Sarah Bass?
So the policy doesn't say that those are the only languages that things will be translated into. It just says that they will automatically be translated into those languages. Like, and so my understanding of that is like, all right, so this document is written in English and it was, and it will automatically be written in English in any other language that is at least five percent, five percent or more of a population, right? So if it's Spanish and Portuguese right now, no, yes, Spanish and whatever, so that it will be English and Spanish and Portuguese automatically. And then, aren't we all, don't we all ready translate into any other language that is requested or needed? Right, so we can communicate with our families and students? So I don't, I think the policy covers that kind of, right? So it's just saying that those are the automatic language, languages that will be, things will be translated into, not that those are the only languages.
Sorry, yeah, I see that now.
Peter?
So I think that's correct. I'm, Dr. Morris, feel free to correct me, but I think that's what it means when it says, in addition to meeting all legal obligations related to language assistance services. So if you have, you know, a language that doesn't meet that threshold, you're still getting that translated. There's also a line here about district will provide free of charge written translations of vital documents and oral interpretations. So I don't know if that totally covers the spoken but not written fluency consideration.
Yeah, I see, it says we'll automatically at a minimum provide, yeah, so. I concur. Was it, were there, did anyone else have comments or concerns? Go ahead, Jennifer.
I guess, maybe it's intentionally broad, but vital documents, written translations of vital documents and oral interpretations of essential information is rather broad? Like, these public meetings are not interpreted in another language. Are these meetings essential? Like, you know, I happened to watch a recording of a Boston school committee meeting where the, like, the school committee meeting had interpreters available on, like, during the meeting to interpret into multiple other languages. Like, is that what we're talking about when we talk about oral interpretation? I don't know, I guess I'd want to hear from the families who have language barriers and find out what would be most helpful to them. Do they, I don't know, I guess I'd want to get more input from the people this would be impacting.
Yeah. Fair, so we are definitely waiting till a later date to vote on this then, it sounds like. All right, does anybody have more input regarding the IHDB policy? And we can move on to future agenda planning. Can you, are you able to share the screen, Mike?
I probably, can I try to read it? Just because I think one of the things, long-term, we're going to figure out is there's other committee agendas and so just on there that, you know, the shared document's great, but it's limited in terms of utility for us, one specific meeting. But let me try to share that. So we have the policies, I'll just say, multiple policies. There's also one on policy AC, commitment to nondiscrimination, that was forwarded that, I think at a prior policy subcommittee meeting, there was some legal fixes we need to make on that. I'd like to come back to the principal piece, particularly, maybe could wait till March first, but, you know, that I don't want to lose that conversation that we started the meeting with at a joint level. Tonight, we'll have the budget hearing. So at that point, we'll have had a four-town meeting, and that'll be a hearing where we'll present more formally the budget and take feedback on that. And then the other piece I had was, there was a request for an update on the block schedule at the high school that came up in the past. So Talib is working on a brief presentation on that transition for next year. That could certainly go on the fifteenth, it also could wait till the first, whatever makes sense to the committee. But that's, I think, what we have, unless there's something I've missed that we were supposed to look back to, then I've not.
What was the first thing you said before principal conversation?
There's a bunch of policies, including one we didn't talk about tonight, which is policy AC, commitment to nondiscrimination. And then a budget hearing, yeah, those are the two things.
Thank you.
No problem.
And then I was gonna ask folks what they think about having the the school choice hearing on the first and moving the vote to the fifteenth of March? Too soon to start thinking about that, or? Peter?
No problem with that.
Seeing some head nods here. So anything else we need to add to the next regional meeting? Allison, go ahead.
Did you say school choice or budget?
School choice. So that the, oh, for the vote, right, this would be the first.
Because I thought we had the hearing tonight.
Right, and that gives us a couple of weeks for input from the public, right, the vote on the first, I guess. Yep. Thing else anyone can think of that needs to be added to the next agenda? All right, so can move along to the warrant report here. I have a question, just procedurally speaking. One of these I can actually read, because I signed it. Do we have to wait till the next time Erv is here to entable the ones that he signed off on? All right. So I'll open this and try not to stumble too hard through it. All right, there we go. I, Ben Harrington, authorized by my signature to the scholarship warrant in the amount of three thousand dollars for the warrant dated one, January eleven, two thousand twenty-two. Into, this includes other funds of three thousand dollars. And I'm reporting that. We have two others that need to be reported at a later date. All right. Is anybody chopping at the bit to accept gifts, to read the? Is anybody chopping at the bit to accept gifts, so to read the gifts? Anyone more awake than I at this one? Okay, Allison, go ahead.
Um, I've moved that we accept the following gifts from Amherst Education Foundation, number one, six, five, one, to support Robert Hanley Scholarship in the amount of six thousand dollars. From, uh, Charlie Schiller to support fifty-five inch Samsung ten eighty P flat screen TV for athletics with a value of about, uh, estimated value of five hundred dollars. From Grin and Barrett, number one, one, seven, five, seven, to support middle school twenty twenty-one picture commissions at the principal discretion in the amount of one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents for a cash total of seven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. And additionally, to accept the following grants, Special Olympics Inc., number six, two, three, five, seven, to support five hundred dollars each to the high school and middle school for unified champion schools expenses, including teacher-coach stipends for activities held, equipment supplies and support of UCS and uniforms and transportation, see attached, value of a thousand dollars, and collaborative for education, number three, nine, two, one, nine, two, seven, to support partial reimbursement for Replic's computer service subscription from the Perkins Grant in the amount of four hundred dollars for a total grant value of fourteen hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, if there's no discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Go, Peter?
Uh, Peter, aye.
Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Allison?
I, Allison, I, sorry.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
Steven?
Steven, aye.
And me, Ben, aye, also. So if anyone has a motion, I will entertain it without debate, perhaps.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All right, another roll call vote. Steven?
Sullivan, aye.
Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Peter?
Jonathan, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
And me, also, aye. Good night, folks.
Good night.
All right.